I'd like to call the Capitol Improvements and City Development Committee to order at 7:00. Before we begin, I find it hard to believe that it's been seventeen years since the 9/11, World Trade Towers and the Pentagon and the rural Pennsylvania attack. We all know where we were when it happened, and I'm sure we'll never forget it as long as we live. In New York, those two huge reflecting balls, I think many of us have been there, is really a very moving sight. So I'd like to take a moment, if we could, for the 3,122 people that were killed in those events on that day, and for those who died trying to save them after we salute the flag. So please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
a presentation from the Attleboro Redevelopment Authority, which is a significant presentation, followed by a motion and a discussion. So, we will go through the presentation for the Attleboro Redevelopment Authority, for which you all have the end of slides. And if you would please let them go through the entire presentation without questions. If you have questions, make notes on your leave-behind slide sheets, and we'll get to your comments at the end. And I'm asking you to do that so that I can register them in the minutes here, in my official minutes. So with that, Mr. Correa, thank you for attending. We've been planning this for a very, very long time, and you've put a tremendous amount of work into this. So would you please introduce your team?
Well, thank you for having us here for this presentation this evening. Tonight, I have with me Barry LaCass, who's going to be making the presentation on our behalf. I have Doug Healy from Environmental Strategies and Managements, who's our licensed site professional, and does all of our abatement work, keeps us on track with the EPA, DEP, and so forth. And we have a guest with us this evening, David Boucher, owner of the New England Sports Village. So as you develop your questions, normally, if I was doing this presentation alone, I'd try to answer them to the best of my ability. But the best of our ability, we have the people here that can answer them very precisely for you this evening. Also in the audience, I have Jackie Romaneki, a member of the Attleboro Redevelopment Authority, Ben Keane III, and Rose Larson. And last but not least, Gail Clark, Capitol Improvements' Administrator for the City of Attleboro. Oh, Susan, I didn't see you there. I didn't think you were coming. I'm sorry. And Susan Blazier, the Governor's Appointments, for the Attleboro Redevelopment Authority. And Gail Clark, Capitol Improvements Administrator for the City, who's worked very hard, along with the rest of this committee here, to put this slideshow presentation for you tonight. So, without further ado, Barry, thank you for presenting on behalf of the ARA Board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, thank you for this invitation to give a presentation and update. I want to acknowledge the assistance of Gail Clark for the ARA, but she's one of many members of the Attleboro City Hall staff that assists the ARA as they move forward. As you all know, several years ago, the model of the ARA changed from having its own staff, its own rental space, things like that, to where they're housed now at City Hall. Staff at City Hall assist the ARA sometimes on a daily basis, and I think that model has worked out very well so far. My goals with regards to the presentation are threefold. First, to summarize what the ARA is, what it does, and how it operates. I want to also update the council and the community on the many ARA projects, both past and present, and to highlight some challenges that they're facing the ARA as we go forward. My task is to keep it as short as possible. There are forty-nine slides. I joke with Mr. Delicio that it should take about two and a half hours, but I will try to keep it under an hour. And as Mr. Chairman, you invited members of the council, if they had any questions, they can certainly ask them at the end, or they can submit them in writing to me via email, or however you'd like to do it. But we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. So without further ado, I'll proceed. So what is the ARA? It was established in 1965 to serve as the urban renewal agency for the City of Attleboro. It redevelops underutilized, deteriorated, or blighted open areas, encourages redevelopment and promotes sound growth, it assembles and disposes of land, it relocates businesses and residents occupying property in urban renewal areas, it demolishes or rehabilitates substandard structures, can borrow money, receive grants, or accept gifts. That's all by statute. You met the members of the ARA team earlier. They're five-member volunteer board of directors. As we mentioned earlier, four members are appointed by the mayor, confirmed by your honorable body. One is appointed by the governor. They're all city residents, and they're all dedicated to serving the City of Attleboro. How does the ARA operate? All meetings of the ARA are governed by the open meeting law. They're all posted. I think always here at City Hall, either in the annex room or upstairs. All actions of the ARA are governed by the board of directors, who you've met tonight. And we try to keep, with the assistance of Gail Clark, and with Bill Lennox, and Dan Lincoln, and MIS, we try to keep the website for the City of Attleboro updated with regards to ARA information. Tonight's presentation tomorrow will be posted on the city's website. How does the ARA operate, as a continuation? The financial statements are prepared and audited annually by the same auditors that audit the city's financial statements, Hagen Sahadi and Company. All redevelopment actions are guided by urban renewal plans. Currently, there are two urban renewal plans being implemented. One is the IBP, the Industrial Business Park. The council approved this urban renewal plan in 2002. And the other one is the Downtown Urban Renewal and Revitalization Plan, or the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan, which the council approved in 2007. So now, let me talk about the IBP, the Industrial Business Park Urban Renewal Plan. We begin with some of the benefits. One of the biggest benefits from that plan is the building of a 3,500-foot roadway known as Commerce Way. That's a road that now connects County and Tiffany Streets. This roadway accomplished several goals. It created buildable lots within the IBP. It provides IBP end-users with direct access to the highway via the improved portion of Tiffany Street. It was designed to create a much-needed alternate east-west bypass route between Routes 123 and 152, because there was no through trucking on the portion of Tiffany Street. And it also reduces, it was designed to reduce the amount of traffic traveling through County Square. Those were the benefits and the goals of Commerce Way. This picture simply shows, in context, the intersections that Commerce Way affects. Up to your left is South Ave and Tiffany Street, which has been completely improved. And then on the top right is County Square. So that's how Commerce Way interacts with those two Some other benefits of the IBP. The ARA sold a 5.61-acre parcel to Mar Seafood, and it was sold in 2010 for $340,000. All but $75 went to Bristol County Savings Bank, which was the lien holder on the entire IBP property. Mar, as we all know, has never built, so it remains an available and buildable lot today. We received $133,000 of taxes to date from that parcel. Second benefit is that the ARA sold 105 acres to the New England Sports Village. In 2015, it was sold for $2.34 million. $2.19 went to pay off Bristol County Savings Bank, so they were paid in full. Only $149,000 went to the ARA, which now helps to pay for some recurring expenses, which are not covered by grants or the urban renewal bond. I know it's hard to see, but the 105 acres is outlined in yellow. It includes everything except for that parcel to the lower right-hand side. This is the New England Sports Village under construction, which I thought was a kind of nice picture. And this is a picture of what New England Sports Village looks like today. Some benefits of the New England Sports Village. It's a 92,500-square-foot state-of-the-art skating facility and ice arena with a restaurant, the barn, Dunkin' Donuts Game Center, Pro Shop, and a physical therapy practice. According to Mr. Boucher, in 2017, over 700,000 people visited New England Sports Village. It's pretty impressive. Tax revenue, I've got some asterisks there. These are subject to abatement, but paid to date $1.3 million. And revenue of $473,000 per year. And those are current values. This is a conceptual drawing of New England Sports Village. It's probably going to change, but I think this gives you the idea of the magnitude of this project. In the center of the picture, you'll see the ice rink. And then, as you travel up, the hill to far left would be the hotel. I understand that might get moved to another parcel, but again, this is a very impressive project. The final piece of the IBP is an option land agreement with New England Sports Village for 38.35 acres. That you can see outlined in yellow on the lower right-hand side. It's under agreement, and we expect to close in October of this year for $820,000, which is subject to DHCD's approval. All sales of urban renewal property are subject to DHCD's approval, both in price and terms. So now I'm going to move on to the downtown urban renewal plan. So I thought this was interesting. This was the vision and the plan. And again, both of these plans are on the city's website under the ARA's page. "Pedestrian-friendly downtown expanded housing and commercial development, improved traffic circulation, and development of an intermodal transportation center to include commuter parking, bus operations facility, and a place for public gatherings." The plan consists of five separate districts: the riverfront district, the Cookson or the Swank District, the downtown commercial district, Union Street, and the Olive and Lamb Street districts. Again, taken from the urban renewal plan, the purpose was to create a transit-oriented development that includes a new riverfront residential neighborhood along the Ten Mile River, and creating more than 300 new housing units that will take advantage of the river views and amenities. To develop an intermodal transportation center incorporating a new parking garage, commuter rail, and GATR bus terminal. To provide greater public access to the Ten Mile River by expanding the Balfour Riverwalk along it. To provide opportunities for new commercial development in transit center, including a grocery store, to serve downtown residents and commuters. To create a connector road parallel to the Ten Mile River linking Olive and Wall Streets that will alleviate traffic congestion and provide enhanced access to transit. To create additional off-street parking to satisfy short-term needs to serve future mixed-use development. And to incorporate aesthetic and pedestrian-friendly streetscape improvements. That was from the plan itself. And I think if you go down that list, you can see some of the things that already have been accomplished. This is a picture of what it looked like before. This is where you see the existing MBTA parking, but right above that are the salt and sandsheds that belong to the DPW. The DPW, various garages and facilities. Automatic machine is between the MBTA and the DPW. You can see the old barn there. So that's what we had to deal with when you folks approved the urban renewal plan. So land assembly was a big part of the intermodal transportation riverfront district. We acquired, the area acquired 16.315 acres, which on that colored plan you'll see is everything except for the dark blue below. That's the MBTA property. Everything else was acquired through $1.5 million from various funding sources, whether it's the urban renewal bond of $300,000, or Gateway City Parks fund, or through the FTA. But land assembly took a while, began in 2008, and was completed in 2015. So this is now to show how far the area has come with regards to that land. So we have the bus terminal for GATR. It went from what you see on the left, which was the old barn, to what it is today. And that was built with $1.9 million of federal funding. It opened This is a shot from inside the DPW yard, looking down to Christopher Heights. And what you see on the right is what you see today, which includes Renaissance Station That's a 2,000-foot road connecting all of the Wall Streets, and it was built with $4.7 million of Mass Works grants. This is the riverfront district continued. This is Renaissance North. It was built on a 1.3-acre brownfield site, which was sold by the ARA for $1.024 million in 2013. $683,100 went to the signal to pay off the Edison Industrial Business Park settlement, if you remember that. Prime Development invested nearly $9 million to construct this seven-story, 80-housing unit building with $6,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor. It opened in the fall of 2015, and to date, we've received about $487,000 in tax revenue. This is the Cookson Precious Metals or Swank District. The ARA redeveloped 186,000-square-foot vacant mill building. It was contaminated and unusable. So we took it from what you see on the left. It was remediated, demolished, and it now is a 2.9-acre developable redevelopment pad, which is now owned by Leach Garner. It's back on the tax rules. It's valued at $544,000, which, at least for now, is $11,000 in tax revenue. I thought this was interesting, because it shows the cost to actually remediate and demolish this building. Approximately $1.9 million. Up on top, you'll see the income sources, and below are the demolition costs and the remediation costs. The ARA didn't walk away with any money on this project. This is the downtown commercial district. According to the urban renewal plan, some goals are to expand the Sanford Street parking structure, the parking garage by 300 spaces, to improve the use of Balfour Riverwalk River Park through the development of surrounding housing, enhance views, increase recreational amenities, and improve pedestrian-friendly access, to incorporate retail uses on the ground floors of new structures, the relocation of Wall Street and South Main Street intersection, and to incorporate aesthetic and pedestrian-friendly streetscape improvement. So based on that, you know, if anyone hasn't walked on that boardwalk in back at Christopher Heights yet, I suggest you do. It's really, it's really nice. But Renaissance North has accomplished some of these goals. The Wall Street, South Main Street intersection, was completely revamped. This is the Union Street District. Nothing's happened yet in the Union Street District. So this is a conceptual plan, looking down from the Union Theater, down Union Street towards downtown. The goal is to transform Union Street into an attractive mixed-use developed neighborhood incorporating new housing, to create opportunity for more than 200 new housing units and new structures, and rehabilitated mill buildings, and to enhance the pedestrian access to the commuter rail platform and the station building. This is the Olive Street or Lamb Street District. The goal here was to create a new DPW central fueling facility. This is what it looked like before. This is what it looks like now. And this on the left is what you see, what you saw in 1987. This is the AFCO Mossberg site. The building was contaminated. It caught on fire, burned to the ground. What you see on the right is the new DPW and central fueling facility. Great use of that land. This is just a summary of some of the urban renewal grants that the ARA has received with regards to the downtown urban renewal plan, but 2.827. This is just for the ARA. So continuing on with the downtown urban renewal plan, these are the development visions and opportunities. So again, you see where the railroad tracks are. You see where the MBTA property is. The proposed MBTA parking garage, you'll see, is highlighted in green. Renaissance North, on the north side of Wall Street, is obviously constructed. Renaissance South is across the street. That's under agreement right now. There are now two future development, developable pads the ARA has site control over. And that's where you see This was a conceptual drawn by the ARA's consultant, Goody Clancy. It shows a conceptual idea of what this property could look like. Down towards Olive Street, down the bottom of the slide, you'll see those are townhouses. As you move further north, up Riverfront Drive, it gets into commercial first floor, the grocery store we talked about, and then it moves on to additional residential housing. Again, this is just a conceptual drawing to show you what the vision is of the downtown urban renewal plan. The parking garage for the MBTA is also shown there in gray. And you'll see that, at least under this concept, all the MBTA surface parking lot has been converted to developable property. But we have some challenges. So according to Doug Healy, who was the ARA's consultant, and I'll let him take over from here on these particular slide.
Good evening, city councilors. Yeah, so the name of, title of my slides, and it's just a few of them, development challenges. So I'm going to talk mostly about the challenges ahead, but I just want to reemphasize, you know, all of the projects that Barry just went over, Swank and Lamb Street, and Automatic Machines, and Riverfront Drive, all had significant environmental issues associated with them. They were all big challenges. And, you know, a lot of credit goes to the ARA and to our brownfield support team, the BST team, which I know you've heard about, but a terrific group of people that have come together since 2010 or 2012 by now, and meeting almost every month to work through these challenges, find funding sources, and to get these projects accomplished. So hats off to So hats off to them. So the main challenge ahead for, within our ITC area are two landfills. One is a municipal landfill, and one is a, what I call, a commercial landfill. This is a picture taken from the, from last fall during the initiation of the cleanup of the commercial landfill. And we were able to get started on this project with the very generous grant funding we got from EPA. And with, we worked for about two and a half months out there, and we moved over 500 tons of trash. And that's a million pounds of trash, which I think is a pretty impressive number. What you see here in this picture, I think what really stands out is the size of this material. This is big bulk, bulk items, commercial trash. It's not what you typically see out of, out of household trash. So, and I'll talk a little bit about the, the history of, of how this came about, but basically throughout this whole process, we were using an excavator and very carefully picking through this area to get this big bulk material out of the ground, and needing to be very careful because we don't know what's in there. We don't know from a health and safety standpoint. We don't know if there's buried drums, those sorts of things. So it's a careful process, but I think, you know, our first initial phase to get a million pounds of trash out of the ground, I think, was, was a good, a good start. Next, please. So this is a, a site map that shows the Reynolds and Markman Property and the, the southern part of the former DPW property. And I'll just outline, the Reynolds and Markman Property is this odd-shaped parcel here. And, and this part of it is due to, as Barry said, there was some old, all right, I guess I'll be showing, I'll be talking a little bit about the, the history there, but there was old river channels throughout that area, and that's how that property came to have that odd shape to it. But we subdivided it into three, three separate parcels to maximize our grant, grants from EPA. And this first area, what we call AOC 1, is, that's Area of Concern 1. There was a chemical storage fire back in 1989 that created a pretty substantial release of TCE in Area 1. That's all been cleaned up at this point. We used our first $200,000 grant, and we removed contaminated soil, and we did some treatment of the groundwater. And I'm very pleased with the results of that. So AOC 1 is pretty, pretty well-done and cleaned up. AOC 2 and 3, within the, the green oval, so that's the commercial landfill I talked about. And so we started that last fall. And then the municipal landfill is this blue oval. So just a, kind of a quick history on how this came to be and how we got to these two ovals here. I have a, a number of very, very high-quality and clear air photos, and the one from, the one I have from 1941 shows that this, this whole area is, is undeveloped and unfilled, and you can see the river meandering through there. You know, the river was straightened out, I'm not sure when, but there was some old river channels throughout that whole area and associated wetlands. So in 1941, we see nothing there. In 1959, this entire area is, is filled, and it's very clear from the photos. You can see in our map here, sort of, well, these are all test pits that we went out and we actually dug around to see what was in there. And yes, it was pretty classic municipal, household-type trash. We found some evidence dating back to 1948 and thereabouts. And so in piecing that, together the history, we know that the, the city had a landfill that is now Finnberg Field, and that was used up until the late 1940s. The city used the Attleboro landfill over by Norton Town Line in the, somewhere in the early 50s. So there was a gap in between there, that municipal trash was brought to this area. Also in 1959, you can see that this whole area is still wetlands. It's not, it's not filled at all. And then I have a nice air photo from 1967 that shows the whole area completely filled. And again, piecing together the history, the Attleboro landfill was closed in 1965, just for one year. They were expanding it, and they were also kind of working on their, the process of burying trash there. So this, this area, this green area was filled probably in 1965. So the, the timing of the air photos I have is, is pretty remarkable to be able to piece this together. And as far as the cleanup goes, what we've done is, for, for both landfills, we've created these cells. You can see all the numbers here. We've created 30-foot by 30-foot cells, that's so that we can manage this in, in smaller pieces. Each cell, you know, we find trash down to at least eight feet, in some cases 14 feet. It looks like the deeper zones are where there actually was a river channel that was entirely filled with, with trash. The orange, excuse me, the, the yellow hatched cells right here, those are the ones that we cleaned up last fall. That's where the million pounds of trash came from. Again, it was rather slow process picking through this, being careful that, you know, we're being mindful of health and safety for workers and for neighbors. We do a lot of air monitoring while we're doing this work. But I want to point out a couple of really positives here. One is that during the construction of Riverfront Drive through here, you can see it cuts right through that municipal landfill. During, you know, Barry mentioned the, the funding that we, that we had for that road, well, that one, that funding included all the work we had to do to manage the soil that came out of that. So during that, the construction of that section, right from here to here, all of that material was removed down to 10 feet. It was all placed on the, the Reynolds and Markman Property. It took us well over a year to get the additional funding to sort through all that. You may have remembered the big mountains that we had there, but that all had to be sorted out, soil, rocks, and trash. But we finished that last year. So, you know, the really good news is that half of this municipal landfill is already cleaned up. I think the other real positive thing here is that our goals are not to remove every can and bottle that we find, but to really go after the bulk material that is going to impede our, our development in the future. Finally, what we've done is, I've come up with a, an estimated per cost, sell, cost per sale of $16,000. And I derived that from all the work that we did last fall, and how much money we spent, and how many cells we were able to, to clean up. And then I've applied that to the, the cells that we have remaining, and it's basically, you know, the commercial landfill and the municipal landfill. We have a total of 61 cells left, and that is the number that we've, we're working with for right now. You know, it's an estimate. We don't know what we're going to find there. I think it's a fair estimate, given what we've found so far. All right, Barry? It's all yours.
Thank you, Doug. So let's talk about the ARA's finances. Cash on hand today is about $74,000. As I mentioned earlier, the ARA does have some recurrent expenses. Its annual audit with Hagan-Sahady is about $13,000. It's required to pay the retirement for former employees of about $3,000. And there's, there are DEP fees that are due on the ITC every year of about $2,400. So before I get to the next slide, I think it's important to sort of clear the air. The, the ARA is obligated to the city of Attleboro for about $790,000 of debt. There's no question about that. The ARA stands ready and willing to pay that once the, once those parcels are sold. So let's talk about that, then. It's broken up into two sections. We have a water debt of about $176,582. That includes $24,000 of interest. And we have the city side of about $614,000. So I'm not going to go through all of these loans, but, and you have them on your spreadsheet, but these are memorialized through your votes, through MOAs with the ARA. There's no dispute whatsoever about the obligation of the ARA to pay these amounts. About $790,000 total represents, it matches with the city's balance sheet from June 30th So let's talk about the proceeds from the land sales. How does the ARA pay you back? So on the IBP 38.35 acres to New England Sports Village, the sale price is $820,000. Again, has to be approved by BHCD. Out of that, if the total amount is paid by the ARA to both the water department and the city, that, the ARA will have net proceeds of $29,000. The second parcel of land that the city, that the ARA can sell is the 1.5 acres to Kugnali Properties, which is expected to close by the end of this year. It might be extended, but for now, it's the end of the year. That's under a grant of $1.2 million. The ARA has to pay 80% of that back to the FTA.
Federal Transit Authority.
Administration. And that's because FTA money was used to buy that land. So that leaves net proceeds from that parcel of $240,000. So if we wanted to move forward with the ITC cleanup, we can see that there's a $777,000 shortfall. The ARA simply does not have the money from those two land sales to continue that project But we want to talk about a path forward. It requires two essential commitments. The first one is from the ARA, that it will apply for a $250,000 brownfield remediation program loan for mass development, which is paid back when the parcels, the developable parcels are sold. And the second is that the council, if the council would allow the ARA to deduct and retain $480,000 from the amount owed to the city to cover the city's share for the cleanup of the old municipal landfill. This is a path forward to continue the ITC projects in a way that, number one, pays back the city everything it's owed, but number two, allows the city to use $480,000 of its, of that money to clean up the municipal landfill. What does that mean to the city of Attleboro? Well, it means the old municipal landfill is cleaned up. It means the water department receives the full payment of about $776,000. It means the city would receive $134,000, which is the $614,000 it's owed, minus the $480,000. And that, of course, the ITC moves forward. What does it mean to the ARA? All loans that are due to the city are paid. It means the ITC dilemma is resolved and the project moves forward. And here we have a budget. So you see the sale proceeds from the IBP and the ITC. If the council allows the ARA to retain $480,000 to clean, clean up the municipal landfill, that's $480,000, plus the loan for mass development. The expenses would be, as Doug indicated earlier, the $976,000 to clean up the cells, and then a 3% contingency. So that's, that's a path forward. So I finished well within an hour, but I wanted to take the, the time to talk about the project team, of course, the mayor's office, and of course, you folks. Gatra, the Mass Department of Transportation, the MBTA, Mass Office of Business Development, Mass Development, Mass Executive House, Office of Housing and Economic Development, the Mass Department of Housing, Community Development, Congressman Kennedy's office, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Federal Transit Authority, SERPED, and Mass Department of Environmental Protection. These are just some of the partners that meet with the BST 2 team to develop ways and come up, come up with creative ideas to take the blighted areas that you saw earlier into available pads and new projects, and to turn polluted property back to the tax This is the cool slide. So this ends my presentation. I thought this is kind of cool.
But it's stuck there forever.
So anyways, again, finished within an hour. Thank you all for listening. Questions can be submitted now or...
Barry, thank you. What you've done is you've presented us a nice, concise history that'll be a permanent part of the record and be viewable for all of the taxpayers in Attleboro, both online and in the permanent record. I have a few things I'd like to just ask you to, to expound upon that you touched upon, but if I could get a little additional details, because I'm sure you know. Are all of the current audits for the ARA up to date?
Yes.
Okay, so Hagan-Sahady has been through all the finances, through all the fiscal years.
Through June 30th, 2017.
The Mars Seafood Lot, is that currently on the market, do you know?
Yes. It's always on the market. So I know that there are negotiations going on with the interested buyers, so it's, it's being marketed.
And, and a portion of the land that the New England Sports Village has not yet bought, but has an, an option to purchase, of the 32 acres, that is the, on your slide, number, they're not numbered.
What page you on, Rick?
I'm on page six, the middle slide on page six.
Yes.
That lower right-hand corner, was it outlined in your slide?
It was outlined in yellow. It's kind of hard to see, but I think when it's on the website tomorrow, you'll be, be able to see it a little bit better.
Is that the land that we used to formerly call the Witch's Hat?
It includes the Witch's Hat, yes.
Okay, you remember it. And the portion of land that we have an option for Mr. Kugnali...
That's not an option. That's a land disposition agreement. So that's, that's scheduled to close at the end of this year.
So that project seems to have been delayed, 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 delayed. Can you elaborate on what's going on there?
Sure. So Marco Kugnali, as you know, is a pretty high-profile developer. He has developments in Mansfield, and of course, here in Attleboro. The project that he's considering in Attleboro, we call it Renaissance South, is actually two, two buildings on that, on that one site. So it's pretty comprehensive. He went through the permitting process with the city of Attleboro. He attempted to get capital financing for it. He was told by his banks that they, he might want to scale the, the project down a little bit. So he's, right now, asked the ARA for several extensions, and that's what he's working on now, is, is to get the capital financing in place.
And I think I had one final question that I wanted to have elaborated on regarding the municipal waste area that remains to be cleaned. I'm, I'm going to guess that like all projects that involve hazardous waste and cleanups, that there's a potential for anything to go wrong, and that it, to, to cost skyrocket. Do we, have we had, done any preliminary surveys to reduce the, the, the potential of that happening?
Yes. As Doug indicated earlier, a number, a number of test pits have been dug in that area. But perhaps even more importantly than that, a portion of the, of the municipal landfill has already been cleaned up during the construction of Riverfront Drive. So Doug has, has seen that, that, that landfill peeled, peeled away. So I think he has a pretty good idea of what's, what's beneath it. And I think that's why, that's what helped him create that, those cost estimates. Thank you, Barry.
That's true, yes. And in addition, most landfills, you know, you have to deal with the trash, but you also have to deal with the oil or hazardous materials that may have leaked into the soil and groundwater. And we're not really, we don't really see very much of that on either landfill.
Councilor Dolan, do you have any questions for the committee?
I don't right now.
Okay, good. Councilor Cooper?
Thank you. Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Rick. Thank you for everybody that came down tonight. Did you, did I hear you right, that Kugnali's for his Renaissance South, the permits were done and approved by the city?
They were, yes.
So just sort of from my perspective, what's frustrating to me is to see that one day in the paper, that we, we've granted an extension for the purchase of that property, which I completely respect. He invested quite a lot of money in plans and all the things that he needed to do. And then several days later, seeing him move forward with a project in Mansfield. And it could simply be all about timing, but it's very frustrating for me to, to see that. So I'm hopeful that it happens in, in, at the end of the year, but I'm just sort of sharing my, my, publicly my frustration around sort of seeing that. And I know it's, it's optics, but what people see and read in the paper, or they, they dream up in their head... up in their head, sometimes becomes reality. So I just want to make, make it known, say it publicly, that me, it was frustrating to see that in the paper. And, you know, you don't have to go into it, I just wanted to say it publicly, and I did share this with the chairman of the area.
I hear you, the ARA hears you. We've heard it before, we understand your concerns.
Thank you. That's it at the moment, thank you.
And your notation will be a part of the minutes.
Thank you.
Counselor Blaze, then, Prigga, then Jackson.
I got a question on a piece of land down, down on Commerce Way. It's supposed to be closed in October.
Yes.
Building on that, in October?
Correct, yes.
Is that a definite?
It's under agreement. That's the date.
Yeah, I've seen it go, we sat in that other room, Barry. There was a lot of promises made about this money coming back to the city. And as it was outlined tonight, we're going to get very little back. The landfill, the city landfill down around Robbins Park?
Yep.
And whatnot. I understand part of it's cleaned up, but the original, the original intent was to turn this over to ARA so they could get it cleaned up and it wouldn't cost the city any money. Am I correct?
Yes, with available grants.
With available grant.
Right.
So now, we've heard tonight that the city owes a share of that now. And they want money back.
I think what the city, what the, what the presentation is showing, that the ARA has received a number of grants, including those from EPA, I'm sorry.
EPA, you have the two-hundred thousand?
The two, the three two-hundred thousand EPA grants for those areas. These grants are hard to come by, so I want to make that, you know, I want to stress that point, that the, you saw a slide that showed the amount of money that the ARA alone has received in different grants. The ARA is always applying for available grants. There's another EPA grant round coming up, but at some point, grants dry up. At some point, there are no more grants, and at some point, the landfill still has to get cleaned up.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand grants dry up, but you sat in that other room, and you know what was promised to the city, that that money would be paid back when it became available. We transferred that land to ARA so it could be cleaned up without city participation. We were sold that idea, Barry. And there's a few of us who are in that room over there, that are still sitting on this council, and I was voiceful, and I hope I may help make it happen, that we bailed ARA out, because I believed in it at that time. And I believed in the people that presented it to us, that we would get paid back. And nice sideshow, slideshow, not sideshow, slideshow. And, and I appreciate all the hard work the volunteers have done, and it's a volunteer organization, I realize that. But when promises are made, I expect them to be followed through. I don't see this money coming back. We loaned ARA a considerable amount of money, so they would stay stable and would keep things working. I don't see the money coming back, Barry. I see, what are we talking, a hundred and some thousand when this is all over, coming back to the city, the way this proposal is?
No, not at all. So a couple of points. First of all, the ARA, when it sold Kugnali or Renaissance North, paid the city back six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars, so I wouldn't call that nothing. Secondly, I don't think that promise was ever made that the ARA can both clean up the municipal landfill and always have grants to cover that. It just turns out right now that according to the proposition or the path forward, the ARA, make no mistake about it, acknowledges and is willing to pay the seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars back to the city, and they're happy to do it. And if the four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars doesn't come back to the ARA to clean up the municipal landfill, then we'll deal with it. What that means is that the ITC comes to a stop, because there are no more grants at this point to clean up. So I just, I want you, so yes, the, the ARA is prepared to pay back every last dime with interest. We're happy to do it, but as long as you understand the path forward doesn't go forward anymore, until we find additional money to clean up the municipal landfill. So as long as everybody understands that, then.
Remaining section.
That's great, that's right.
We've already cleaned up a good amount of it.
That's true, that's true.
Okay. Now, when that land gets sold or gets developed, why wouldn't you use the profits from that ARA's property, become a profit, to clean up that remaining part of the landfill?
The two parcels of land that I identified that have been sold provide the seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars to be back to the city.
Now, those pieces are not on Riverfront Way.
That's correct.
You have some pieces that I think I heard are pretty well cleaned up.
No, they, as you heard Mr. Healy talk about, there's two areas, about sixty cells, that still need to be cleaned up. You cannot sell those properties without those cells being cleaned up.
There's sixty?
Sixty cells, thirty-by-thirty cells, sixteen thousand dollars each, that's the cost to clean up both the Reynolds and Markman landfill and the city's municipal landfill. Nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars.
A little under a million.
A little under a million. You can't sell those land, those, you can't sell those, those developable pads until that's cleaned up.
How much would it, I'd like to know, and you probably can't give me the figure, but I'd like to know how much to finish cleaning up the Reynolds and Markman section.
Yeah, it's on the slide.
It's right on the slide. Is it, the city side is four-eighty, so?
Four-ninety-six.
About the same.
So it's, it's about equal. The Reynolds and Markman is about four-ninety-six, the, the landfill for the city is about four-eighty.
Okay, so for four-ninety-six, you could clean up the Reynolds and Markman portion?
Yes.
Half a million. That becomes market.
No, well, that's connected to the, if you go back to one of the slides. You see the future development pads? So the yellow, which has area of concern one, two, and three. That's a developable pad right there.
Yeah.
That's one pad. That's where both landfills are located. The second developable pad is to the right of that, in the purple. To answer your question, I think, if I understand your question, the developable pad to the right in purple, yes, could be sold by the ARA. Because I don't know if that's, is that fairly clean?
It's close, yeah.
It's close, yeah. So the, the big area of concern is the, the yellow developable pad, but again, that can't be sold until it's cleaned up.
Oh, that whole area. There is, I am a little confused. Now, that, that includes all of the city landfill?
Yes.
Within the yellow.
Because a portion of the landfill has already been cleaned up with Riverfront Drive.
What is the blue circle then?
That's the municipal landfill. That's about the area of the municipal landfill. But you can see where it overlapped.
Wish I had appointed, because this is.
Hold on a second. Let me see. This is the municipal landfill.
Yeah.
This is the commercial landfill.
Okay.
And this whole yellow part is really all one, one parcel at this point.
I thought you said in three.
Now, if you circle the first three numbers, right there, there, and there, what does that entail?
That's the rental, that's the Reynolds and Markman landfill.
That's the Reynolds and Markman.
Correct.
And that would cost, as you said, a half a million dollars to finish cleaning up that section?
Correct.
One of the real challenges here is that when we apply for grants, there are pretty strict rules about who can get grant money. And basically, if you cause a problem, you can't get grant money to clean up a problem that you caused.
I realize that.
If you're aware of the, the situation. And that's, that's exactly what the ARA is going to run into and has run into as far as trying to get grant money to clean up the municipal landfill. The, the commercial landfill is another matter, so we've been able to get grant money for that, but the reason for the, the AOCs only being within the Reynolds and Markman property, they don't extend on to, they don't extend into, really, we're not using grant money for that part, because that's municipal landfill that's on Reynolds and Markman property. So really, for the, for the ARA to try to get grant money to clean up something that the city's responsible for is probably not going to happen.
So gentlemen, if I could ask you to suspend this discussion. Counsel Blaze, I've noted in the minutes your comments about past promises and the costs and the grants, but I, I did hear you say you're a little bit confused, so I'm going to give you some time to collect your thoughts and to deal with the ARA offline. And if you have further questions, we'll entertain them, but if I could ask you to surrender the floor, I think we, we've, we're no longer.
I'll surrender the floor, Mr. Chairman of this committee, but I'm not happy with it.
And you'll get another bite of the apple when we get into the council regular meetings, if anything comes up to a vote.
You were in that room, you know.
I was there with you.
And we made some hard votes, real hard votes.
I'm just asking if you'd surrender the floor so that we can move on.
Certainly.
Thank you. Counsel Prigga.
Thank you, Chairman Conti. I was delighted to hear that Mr. Korea happily pointed out that he brought the people here to answer the questions, because I have some pretty specific questions with regards to the New England Sports Village that I would love for Mr. Boucher to answer. In preparing for tonight's meeting, I went back and read a couple of the different Sun Chronicle articles, just highlighting some of the challenges that you're facing and things like that, so I'm hoping that maybe you could give us some clarification on that this evening. So what are some of the problems that you're still currently dealing with? And before you answer that, I do have multiple questions, which I'm happy to submit to you after the meeting.
If, if you could, if you could try to consolidate your, your comments into specific questions, it would be helpful.
Sure, I, I do have very specific questions, thank you.
Perfect, excellent, stick with that.
Got it. You're on.
With every new business, there's always challenges. With every building, there's always challenges, so nothing out of the ordinary of a new building, such as the hockey rink, which is a unique atmosphere in a humid environment.
Would you mind coming to the podium, please?
Yes, that would be great.
Thank you for allowing me to share some thoughts tonight. So we're going through normal challenges of a brand-new business. Brand-new building has proposed and presented some challenges to us, which we're getting through. Unfortunately, six months into running this facility, one of our chillers blew. The chiller blew because of no fault of our own, and so we had to replace that. That slowed us down a little bit operationally, and we've been working with various departments within the city to try and curb that from not happening again. So that was a first challenge. We've gone through some challenges, and I think we've, we're getting close to working through challenges with assessed values. We are the most highly assessed hockey rink in Massachusetts. That was a little bit of a surprise that we're going through and, and working through. Operationally, as I said, we're a new business, so we had to overcome some challenges there. And, you know, just generally speaking, it's a new business, so we're, we're working through those challenges. We were presented with some opportunities, as we were talking about tonight with the option land. The option land does give us an opportunity to provide potentially more amenities to the sports village, so we're finalizing a new master plan on how we'll attack the, the rest of the village. So what we've been doing over the past, really, nine months, as the building has started to listen to us and behave as we've asked it to, we've started to really look at the master plan and start to put forward internally what we think will be next building and next programming for the village.
That was my next question, actually. What is your timetable for those next phases?
So our, our goal at the moment is to late fall to start cutting trees. We will be going into, into the main entrance, which is towards the, away from Tiffany Street intersection, towards the county street side, so that's second, which currently is the Mar Seafood entrance. So that will be our main entrance, coming in there, so coming in, developing that area. We'll be going back, as our promise to the neighbors, we'll be building berms and, and screening for our neighbors on the Ides Hill part of the property, and then start to build from there back towards Commerce Way. So that building would be what we've called our fieldhouse, and what we're looking at is, again, part of this master plan, is not only looking at activities, but it's also looking at traffic flow and making sure we're, we've learned from, you know, traffic flow coming into this first building, how do we optimize and make things even better into the next building?
Great. May I continue? Thank you. So again, as part of my reference point for tonight, I was just reviewing some of the Sun Chronicle articles that are surrounding, so you know the next questions that are coming. So I would like to know who the remaining partners are in the developmental group. I would also, just, I would like you to touch on, would like the status of the lawsuit for the, for the back owed, what's owed out there. And so the news article states that problems are being managed, you're saying things are being managed, and they're on a path to resolution. Does this include the resolution? You're attempting to settle this, have there been any settlement discussions? And I know that you can't really discuss things that are currently in litigation, but I think it would be helpful to us, as we're, you know, there is a, the master plan that you're talking about is coming, hopefully, back online, starting with some tree cutting. I'd like to hear how the lawsuit is affecting you, who your partners still are, and what we're doing.
So in terms of the partnership, we did streamline, so I have one partner out of New York, Stuart Sibleburg, and I are taking the project forward. And then in terms of the lawsuit.
So just two of you?
There's the two of us, yes. In terms of the lawsuit, it is an active lawsuit. We believe it is a hundred percent false. We're fighting it, we'll fight it to the end. Right now, in court, if you look at the documents, we're looking at the summer of 2020 to get to some form of resolution, but we believe that we followed a guaranteed maximum price contract.
Okay, and you believe you have the, like, financial capacity to kind of complete this project from two to notes?
The next phase is what we're funding, and we're getting ready to fund, start that phase.
So then, let me ask the other sticky question. I, I appreciate the fact that you're going to fight it through to the end, but what if you lose?
It's an active lawsuit, that we firmly believe we have followed the guaranteed maximum price contract.
Okay. And so as, so again, I just go back to, like, again, I appreciate your firmness and dedication that you're going to win this. However, like, what happens, so we're talking about the Mar Seafood piece of property that you've, that you've extended the contract, you extended the contract, and now you're supposed to pull the trigger on that in October.
That's not the Mar Seafood.
Yeah, not Mar Seafood, my apologies. My apologies. You know what I'm talking about. So now, with the city, if things don't turn out well, like, how would the city be affected by that, just out of curiosity?
I'm not the one to ask on that one.
What was the question again?
So.
The piece of land they helped you, which is trying to.
So I guess my concern is, is that if, if things don't turn out in the manner in which Mr. Boucher and his other partner want this to work out, I just, I'm slightly concerned if they have to file, file for bankruptcy, or if they have to sell the property, and just to, I guess my question ultimately ends up being, do you see the property now involved in this deal with this, with, with us at risk for either being sold or, or risking in becoming part of that said lawsuit? Because if it's some, an asset that you take on in the middle of the lawsuit, would it be subject to a concern in the lawsuit?
So I don't understand the question, but let me try to, let me try to this angle. The option land, Mr. Boucher and his partner have been paying the ARA on a monthly basis to secure that option land. So as of today, there's about, what, six-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand?
Paid for.
Paid for, so.
Sure.
Well, that, that's important, because I think it gets to the, I thought was your question, which is, whatever happens with the lawsuit, does that affect Mr. Boucher's ability to buy the option land? Is that what the question was?
Yeah, that's part of it, yes.
So, so to answer that question, so of the eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand has already been paid, sitting in the area's account.
And we have the expectation that we're going to close on that piece of property?
I would hope so, because that leaves very little due in October.
Sure, so is that the plan?
Yeah, it's non-refundable.
Yeah, it's non-refundable to the New England Sports Village. If we don't close, then they default.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's pretty much a guarantee. I don't think David walks away from money like that.
So then my very final question--
And I have--
--is I understand that you're involved in a group building the sports complex at Braintree High School. How will that affect the development down here?
The Braintree High School project is a completely different partnership, so it has no effect to the New England Sports Village.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Surrendering the floor.
I have one question just about the cleanup plan, but I can't see the floor if you want me to. Like, my--I guess it would be specifically for Barry. So this location down on Riverbank Road where we still have cells that are still dirty and the DPW is dumping stuff down there and then going back and picking it up and moving it around, do we have concerns about that?
So you said a lot in that sentence, so just--
I was trying to hurry it up--
Just to rewind a little bit. It's not DPW dumping. Are you talking DPW dumping the filings or the shavings from the road?
So there's some of that. There's some other things that are--so when I walk the dogs down that way--
Yeah.
--I'm seeing, you know, the City of Attleboro employees discharging things from big giant trucks. I don't know what the--necessarily the content of the truck was.
Those are millings from the roadwork.
And it's all in that--it's all in that same area where has not been, you know, what, in my opinion--
Council, what specifically is your question?
So is it safe for them to be doing that? Should we be, you know, managing, you know, having people on that land dig and stuff up if we're taking severe concerns when we're moving those 30x30 and we have our guys down there scooping up stuff all the time?
So they're not digging, they're storing. And then it's an important distinction, I'm sure Mr. Healy will back me up on this. When you dig in contaminated soil, that's a whole different ballgame than if you plop something on top of it. So what they're doing is plopping something on top of it now.
And then they remove it.
And then they remove it without digging.
Okay.
They just need a staging area. They're bringing it all in, they want to consolidate it, and then in one swoop, take it to a recycling facility.
There's no other place in the city that we could do that? That's not--
They're working on it.
They're working on it down off of Pine Street North.
Okay.
It's just not permitted yet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I see the floor.
Council Jackson. Thank you very much, Council Conti. I don't have that many questions now that Council Poriga has asked, many of them that I was going to ask, many of my concerns. But I am going to touch just on one thing, because DPW does need to go through a permitting process in order to move everything down to Pond Street North, right? We're still waiting on that.
That's right.
Because I've gotten many, many calls from constituents that have asked that question, like, why are they dumping all this stuff? It looks so pretty down there. But we're still waiting to get that permitting process done, to be able to move all that, to be able to just put it over there. Other than that, it is safe. But I'm just going to go back to a question I do want to ask you, Mr. Boucher. You were saying you were referring to a chiller, and the city was working on a chiller with you. Exactly, does a chiller have to do with the ice rink, right? So explain to the public what the chiller is, please.
So a hockey facility makes ice, and ice is created by chillers. We have two 200-ton chillers that create ice for our facility. What--part of the process of that chiller has a refrigerant in it as well as water. Water cycles through. Water that's high mineral content mixed with the fluid of the--for the chiller can corrode pretty quickly. That happened very quickly. So we are dealing with that issue and moving forward.
So that puts you behind a bit, because a chiller, I can only imagine, is very costly--
Yes.
--in order to keep the rinks cold.
Correct. So we didn't miss a day.
Thank you.
Second thing is the building itself. When we had the series of storms last late winter, early spring, nor'easters, we lost power here in the Attleboro area for days. Our rink was out almost three days, and within two hours of the electricity coming back on, we were skating. That speaks to the building itself and how tight the building is, and, you know, the design, which was a Canadian product, compared to all the other ice rinks around here, they were out for many days, if not weeks, to get their ice back up and running. So great things--
That's a positive.
Some things that we're working on. So it's a new building, and it is now starting to behave like we want it to.
So you have faith in your next project moving forward on this option land? You see yourself going forward with everything that we've read in newspaper. See, I'm one of the city councilors that voted many, many years ago to take this land, and we were told, build it and they will come. It's going to be an industrial park. So I'm still kicking myself in my butt, because there was a lot of things that didn't happen that I thought was going to happen. So I'm really hoping that you come to us in good faith and continue to move forward with what your plans, what you have in mind for this land.
Mm-hmm.
But in good faith to the City of Attleboro.
I always work in good faith.
Thank you. Mr. LaCass, I have a question for you, please.
Before you ask that question, if I could just follow up on the concern you raised about the good faith. So as part of the DHCD approval process for any land that's disposed of by the ARA, DHCD will look to those things, those very things that you just mentioned. What is the developer going to put there? When is it going to go there? What is the ARA's involvement in that? Those are things that DHCD will look at before it blesses this sale. And that is what they look at when they bless any sale from the ARA.
So with that being said, moving forward to the Renaissance South. Looking at North, I, like probably many of my colleagues, are disappointed, because, I mean, it's beautiful. The building is absolutely gorgeous. It's nice to see something on that corner. Living here my whole entire life, it really is--it is pretty. But there's nothing downstairs yet, and he still feels like--
That's not true. He's a physical therapist.
Well, there is--well, yeah, there's one, sorry.
That's right.
There's one, one. So he still feels that he has the confidence in South, like, you know, developing, like, we're going to get businesses in there, which we, you know, that's a big concern of mine, because I just see if we put those buildings up there and they remain empty, and then all of a sudden he claims bankruptcy or something, and we have more empty buildings in the City of Attleboro.
So--
And so I don't have--
At the risk of that being tomorrow's headline, let's put that to rest.
Thank you.
The--as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Krugnali is going through the capital financing process of those buildings, just like he did with Renaissance North, just like he did with Mansfield Properties. If he doesn't succeed in that, then the property will be disposed of by the ARA to some other developer. If he does succeed in that, then once again, the covenants and restrictions that I talked about, the guarantees, if you will, that DHCD approves, has in it the timeline in which that bill--those buildings ought to be built, the design specifications of how those buildings will look, those sort of things. So when you talk about how much faith do we have, that's the belt and suspenders. It's good faith, of course, but it's covenants and restrictions and things that are recorded at the Registry of Deeds and requirements that DHCD puts on these properties that gives us that belt and suspenders protection, that the property will be developed according to the plan.
Thank you.
Well, Council Jackson.
Thank you.
Your comments reflect a lot of the trials and tribulations of the commercial real estate market in New England. Well done. Council Cooper, you're up next.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Council Delicio is up next.
Thank you. So a couple things. First, these grants are very hard to come by, and I think that's important that we all understand. And the ARA has done a really nice job of being creative and getting some of these grants, and I just want to provide a piece of clarity. When we talk about that AOC, those areas of concerns, those were broken up for a very specific reason. And correct me if I'm wrong, it was to help be able to get some of the grant money for the remediation. I believe it was Judy Robbins who came up with that solution. The ARA, as it says on the second slide, can borrow money, receive grants, and accept gifts. So a big function of what the ARA does is to get grants that the city can't get, especially if it's where the city can't be the primary responsible party, the PRP. So I think it's important that, you know, we understand that, because I think some of the confusion came in when people were talking about, well, we have the municipal landfill, the commercial landfill, AOC. So I think they're separate, but yet conjoined. I was glad to hear conversation about the payback of the loan, because I think a lot of it started in January at the mayor's inauguration, where he floated that it would be forgiven. So to hear that this is where we're at at this point is very encouraging. So all that being said, my question, I know it's a long way to get here, is what is the status of the urban renewal bond? And is there a Phase Two of the urban renewal bond where there is potential for funding which can help offset some of these--
So second question is, there's no Phase Two.
Okay.
The first question was, I think the urban renewal bond is all but spent. And the point of the urban renewal bond was to bridge the gap between what the grant-- what the available grants were to develop the intermodal transportation center portion of the downtown urban renewal plan and what was needed to actually construct it. So that bond amount, which is a kind of a weird amount, that was the gap that filled that. So that bond could only be used for the intermodal transportation center district of the project, Phase 1A, if you will.
Okay, so if I may--
If you may.
So once that bond is all done, and I know, you know, from my time on the ARA, that the bond, we were pretty close to expending that at the time. There were no other options, no other opportunities to go back to the table, so to speak, to see what other, if there's an expansion or an extension of the urban renewal.
So just so we're clear, the bond was a borrowing from your honorable body.
Yep.
So if you're interested in the ARA asking for a second borrowing to complete projects, I certainly think that that's doable.
Well--
But that's a borrowing.
Sure. And I fully understand that.
Okay.
And I think if we're going to, you know, it's awesome, and now what, when we're looking where we are and we're looking down the road and we're seeing all these future pictures, I think it's great. I think that, you know, we have to kind of pick up the course and go with it, and I think ITC seems to be the most pertinent part that we have to endure right now, because we have the cleanup, we have the potential, you know. I think we've all heard concerns from residents about they want a Wegmans or Trader Joe's. So to hear that there's a potential of a supermarket going down there is fantastic. But I just don't want to see the situation where we're getting the public hyped, that, hey, this is going to happen, this is going to happen. I think we have to be realistic about where we're at, and so I appreciate this discussion. What I would ask through the chair is, you know, your last slide had that part of the team is the municipal council. So if we're part of the project team, which, and I know that we are, I'd like to ask the chair to request for minute meetings, minute meetings, meeting--
Minutes.
Minutes. Sounds a lot better that time. For ARA meetings and appropriate BST3 meetings as well. I think just wait here so we can all continue to be on the same page.
So happy to do that, but the minutes are on the city's website, if you'd like to go and check them out there. But we're happy to put you on our distribution list--
We used to be at some point. We used to be. We used to be on the distribution list.
Yeah, I don't know, was it when? I don't know who was receiving though. Mr. Conti, you--
I used to attend the meetings five years ago.
Yeah.
But since getting a nine-to-five job, I haven't been able to do that.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. No problem at all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Council Delicio. I was going to compliment you for bringing clarity to the discussion. And Barry, you really pulled it together nicely, and thank you for your comments. Council Cooper.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of comments and questions for Mr. Boucher.
Oh, fine.
Dave, nice to see you. Could you tell us sort of what other--you made a comment, something like, we're the highest rink taxed, at the highest in the area. Can you tell us sort of what other rinks are in the area that are--
Same language.
--like the New England Sports Village, with a restaurant, a Dunkin' Donuts, a physical therapy place, rink and a half, sort of everything that you have? Is there something similar to compare it to in the area? Sort of--
Yeah.
Why did you make that statement, I guess?
So currently, there are actually a lot of projects that are in the process of the construction or recently completed construction. So the Worcester Arena is a fairly new arena, very similar to NESV Ice. Essex Arena, up in Danvers-Middleton area, very similar to sheets of ice, you know, common areas and food and stuff. Wellsley Rink is in--right now, the Wellsley Rink is in construction, being built. The Canton Arena, Canton Ice House is a new arena, again, two sheets, restaurant. So these are--Falmouth Rink is a little smaller, somewhat newer property. So these are the, in the past three to five years, rinks that have been constructed.
Great, thank you. And then just a follow-up comment, similar to my comments to Mr. Krugnali. It's to me, selfishly, it's about Attleboro first, Attleboro before Braintree, Attleboro before Mansfield. There's only so much money. And, you know, it's great to get involved in Braintree, but I'm selfish and I'm only concerned about Attleboro. I wish you well in Braintree, and I wish Krugnali well in Mansfield. I want this done, because we all stood in front of a whole lot of people and said, this is what we're going to do. And please, as the Ward Two Council, any changes to your master plan. We made some sort of hints of it tonight. Please make sure we communicate that to the council, and we don't read about it in the paper first.
Steve.
Because I hate that.
Me too.
I get phone calls from people that say, why is this in the paper and we didn't know about it? So please, you've been good about that so far. Please continue that. I appreciate it, and so will the people that are directly affected that live right in that area. Thank you.
Absolutely.
That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Just to bring a point of clarity to your first comment about the assessment, I just want to make sure you and the council know that in the abatement process, the city assessors presume to be correct in the appellate tax board, and the burden of proof to prove the assessors wrong is on the applicant. And so that's a court case, and they'll decide that separately on 100 Caven Street. Councilor Kober, you're up next.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you for this presentation as a freshman counselor. It's great to see this and hear the history, and I definitely appreciate that and all that. I was wondering if you could clarify about the $480,000. Is that--will that still be paid back to the city after the cleanup is done? Or are you asking for that $480,000 to be forgiven?
So if you look at it this way, if we believe for a moment that the municipal landfill is the city's responsibility, and the ARA hands over a check to the city for $790,000, which is full payment of loans, and the city then recognizes its responsibility and hands over a check to the ARA for $480,000, the city will be paid back in full. All you'll be doing with that $480,000 is remediating a municipal landfill. The path forward I outlined skips that step of handing over a $790,000 check. It skips it over because it's 790 minus 480 that the ARA would retain and move the project forward with its license type professional. It's a more streamlined way of getting that project or keeping that project on its path. So to answer your question, it would be the city's money being used to pay for city's responsibility.
That's how I understood it.
If I could interject, but Barry, that would be a decision of the council? Yes, because, yes. That's what your question was, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then roughly, how long do you think it would take for the cleanup? And what do you foresee is the future for the ARA? So my understanding is there's $74,000 in assets right now for the ARA, and it costs, what's it cost?
$18,000.
$18,000 a year. So that gives you roughly four years to--
Great question.
--to survive before being able to sell this or do something to be able to continue.
Yeah.
Do you foresee being able to get that cleaned up in time and--
It's a great question, Counselor. I think that if the path forward materializes, as we've outlined, I see no reason why the cleanup couldn't take place after the sale of those properties. So sometime in 2019. The second question is very, very, a very good question. You know, as I showed, you know, even though the ARA has only $74,000 in current cash, you know, it does have some recurring expenses, and you're right, it turns out to be about to be about four years' worth. So, I think that at that, you know, after the ITC is cleaned up and, and materializes, those developable pads that you see there, those will hopefully bring in some money back to the ARA so that it can continue with the other districts. Now, one of the other districts that it's looking at is the Union Street District. So, with the sale of those developable pads comes the opportunity for more money to go back to the ARA to continue these projects. And I, I think it's fair to say, except for those recurring costs, every dollar of that money will go to project costs. I mean, the area doesn't have any overhead. It doesn't have rent, it doesn't have employees, so it really is a workable model.
That concludes my questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Delisio.
Thank you.
And then Counselor Reynolds.
Barry, just another piece of clarification for me, if you don't mind. So, where the municipal landfill, it's cleanup that needs to be done, we're the primary responsible party, so we have to pay, because the ARA is not able to get grants, where that's contaminated through municipal use, if you will. So that 400-some-odd thousand, that's not a forgiveness, that's money that this city's gonna have to pay at one point.
You, you're right.
Whether it's now or whether it's 20 years from now.
And, and very, very good question, and, and that's exactly correct. And it's very similar to the Fimberg Field. If you remember, the council approved the, the, the transfer of the Fimberg Field to the ARA with the hopes that the ARA would be able to find some available grants to clean up an old municipal landfill. It wasn't able to, because the EPA decided that, that Attleboro was the principal responsible party, and it wasn't willing to look at that transfer as a reason to, you know, look the other way on that. So, it's a very similar situation.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, Fimberg will be cleaned up with city money.
Correct.
In the budget.
So I interpret your response to his comments to be the same as earlier, saying that if there is to be a phase two, it's gonna be a bonding for phase two decided by the council.
Well, I, Mr. Delisio's question was about the initial urban renewal bond, and his question was, now that that's all but exhausted, is there an opportunity for a second urban renewal bond? I suppose that if a project, if a need for a project required a borrowing from the council, that, that certainly is the council's discretion, but we believe that the money from those two, from the sale of those two developable pads will assist the ARA to continue moving forward other projects. Now, it might come down to, there is a project in one of these districts that simply requires an initial, another borrowing from the council. We're not, we're not anywhere near that right now. That would be for eminent domain takings, but I think even if we did that, and this is sort of going way ahead, but even if the ARA came to you and said, listen, we wanna buy, we wanna take by eminent domain every property on the kids' downside of Union Street, which the area is not thinking about doing, but if they did, that, that would require money through a pro tanto. The, the area would have to give the money to the owners. It'd have to come up with that money somehow. If that, if part of the plan was to ask the council to borrow that money to provide the pro tanto to those owners, gain control of those properties, then the model would be that the area would then resell that, those properties to a redeveloper, take that money back, and pay off the bond, the borrowing. That would be the new model. The model of the urban renewal bond that's just about expended was completely different. That was a, that was a, a budget that was created by previous employees that had a negative delta, and that bond provided that, that negative delta to further the phase 1A of the downtown project. That's a different model.
Counselor, Counselor Reynolds.
So I'm just gonna go, if I may, back to the 480,000.
You certainly may.
So what I'm asking, Barry, and I just wanna clarify again, that the 480,000 would be used to clean up, but this council has to approve that money, and in the next breath, we could very much approve it, but approve it only to get it back again as a borrow.
Yeah, well, that would be-
We could actually do that.
Yes, it would.
I, I understand what you're saying, but we could do that.
Yes, you could, but that would require the ARA to also agree to that, because that would be represented-
Right, they could say no.
That's right, so-
And that's fine.
Well, that's right.
But, but we could say that we could definitely do that.
Yes.
They could clean it up, they could sell the parcels, and then they would still owe us the 480,000.
If they agreed to that, yes.
If they agreed.
Yep, that's, that's certainly within the-
That's all I wanted to ask, thank you.
Counselor Dolan.
Hi. I changed my mind, I do have a-
I'm glad you did.
Actually, I have a few questions, but I'll put them in an email to make things move along. But, I would like to say, since I might be the last one to speak, I'm a freshman counselor as well, and I've talked to several members of the ARA, and I just have to say, I think you all are amazing. I really do. I think the things that you have done as a volunteer organization, I think is amazing. I, I do, I don't know.
They deserve all the credit.
I, I, no, I agree. The fact that, the amount of work that you do for free as a volunteer for the benefit of our city, I think is amazing, and I just wanna give you kudos.
Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation, Barry.
Well said. And well done, Barry, Rich, thank you, Dave. Dave, all of you, thank you so much for your presentation. It was a very healthy discussion. The council has some difficult choices to make in the future, and this is gonna certainly go a long way in helping us to do that. Counselors, if you have additional questions, the, the, the chair would like to be able to somehow keep track of what's going on between the discussions of you and the ARA. So, if you'd be so kind to just copy Virginia, when you're sending questions to the ARA, at least we can see what's going on in the discussions, so that we won't be surprised when we get in another discussion down the road. So I'd appreciate that courtesy. Thank you all for being here, and great job.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, members of the council.
And I mirror Counselor Dolan's compliments to all of you and your volunteer time. Thank you so much. So, moving on, Counselor Dolan and Counselor Cooper. From the docket of September 18th, 2018, I wish to call for a public hearing on October 2nd, 2018, for the following request in accordance with Chapter 3-8 of the Revised Ordances of the City of Attleboro. But the mayor respectfully requests this honorable body to waive the following permit and application fees related to the construction associated with the Attleboro High School project, including building general, electrical, mechanical permits, fire protection sprinkler alarm permit, low voltage permit, water and sewer permits, dumpster permits, street opening permits, fuel storage permits, sewer connection permits, curb cut permits, health department inspection fees, conservation commission application fees, local wetlands protection ordinance fees, wetlands construction and a notice of intent filed with the Conservation Commission, the wetlands crossing notice of intent filed with the Conservation Commission, and the public waterworks, utility portable water cross connection fees, the sheet metal fees, the temporary heating separate gas sheet metal permit, the temporary cooling separate gas sheet metal permit, the major site plan review application with planning board fee, the various permits and variances with zoning board of appeals, such as earth removal, the height of the building, and so forth.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Cooper. Now that the motion has been made and seconded, and the motion is in order, before we have a discussion, I'd like to amend the motion, because through the help of Deb Gould, who is here, and Deb, if you would take the podium, Deb has done a tremendous amount of work, and thank you for that, Deb, and she's discovered that some of these permits and fees cannot be waived.
So, just to follow up, I touched base, sorry, I touched base with every department for a fee that was listed, to go over what the understanding of, of the particular permit and application fee was. Nothing for gas can be waived. So, under the temporary permits for heating and temporary cooling, in parentheses where it says separate gas, the recommendation is to strike that. That has to do with the way the City of Attleboro pays the gas and mechanical, the gas and plumbing inspector. Probably only Counselor Jackson might remember, but that was an issue that came up many, many years ago, when the electrical permits and stuff were paid out of the revolving fund. So we know those particular permits cannot be waived. That has to do with the methodology of payment. I did go over that with the city solicitor's office as well. Yesterday, we had a phone conversation, and today we met in person. The second item that should be stricken from the motion as a friendly amendment would be the health department inspection fees in discussions with Alan Perry. Those are actually part of a regulation which is under the Board of Health and under a particular chapter, and those should be waived by the health officer, which is Dr. Quinn. So that's, I believe, something from the administration that would go forward. In discussions, in reviewing this, I believe there will also be another matter that comes before the municipal council as a separate communication in the future, which is something that was inadvertently omitted, but when they were reviewing this prior to it coming downstairs. So, a, a lot of that was done by the administration and the staff in the mayor's office previous to my seeing it. I wasn't here on the floor, so I followed up afterwards.
Deb, thank you so much for contacting all those departments. It frankly would not have occurred to me to contact all these departments to see whether or not the permits were in order or not. So thank you very much for-
No problem. I mean, part of it did-
You did my work for me, basically.
Well, I was a little nervous. It's a really big project for the City of Attleboro, so, and I didn't want there to be many, any misunderstandings with department heads later on. As a result of the permitting and application process, it is still possible that there will be costs associated with the permitting. For example, I think the council recently addressed a matter for Pond Street for the peer review. So if there's a, if there's a cost of peer review, that would still be a cost of the high school project, but the permitting, anything that we can waive that is a city permit or application fee is what's before you that could be waived, so that it would not go in the cost of the high school project.
Thank you.
So.
Counselor Dolan, you have any questions about what's been said?
I don't.
Counselor Cooper, you're all set?
Thank you.
Everybody else all set? Thank you, Deb.
Set, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You have a good night.
So the way I would like to handle this, Counselor Dolan, is I would like for you to make a motion, because the president, the chairman cannot make a motion, to delete the health department inspection fees and the separate gas fees from the motion. Just say so moved.
So moved.
And I'll second it. Thank you. So now the motion is, everything that I said, with the exception of halfway down health department inspection fees, and in temporary heating and temporary cooling, we're gonna remove the separate gas permits. Is everybody clear what we're voting on?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. There is a second item in front of the committee that I wanna discuss with you, and that is that the 10-ton split system HVAC, that's heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, on top of the Shang Building, sits on top of the roof. It is the size of a railroad car. It's huge. And inside that box, metal box, is a big engine and huge radiators and tanks of refrigerant coolant that work together to bring both heating and cooling down to the registry of deeds. That has failed completely, and the registry of deeds has been closing at 1:00 in the afternoon due to the insufferable humidity, and will shortly, as this is September 11th, and it will soon be October 11th, be leaving at 1:00, because it'd be freezing in, in, in the building. I'm not gonna get into the fact that the registry of deeds and the motor vehicle do not pay any rent to the city. It's our building, and it's our responsibility to take care of it. However, I'm uncomfortable that we have just one quote, and that we're being asked to do some funding. Knowing the urgency of the matter, I promise you that I will be diligent to follow up on this between now and two weeks, so that we can get it through the committee and through the council quickly, and by then we should have enough information to make an assured decision. Are you comfortable with that?
No, I completely agree with that, because we're supposed to have three quotes.
Okay. Counselor Cooper, your comments?
Yes, so are you, thank you for your commitment, first of all, to seeing it through, but, so, are you saying we're gonna hold the vote until we get the quotes that we need?
No. No, what I'm saying is that I wanna get two weeks of your time, the council's committee's time, to do a further investigation of the circumstances that led to this request, and that if, within two weeks, we do not have those two quotes, and we have a good excuse for why we don't, that I may ask you to appropriate an amount not to exceed $40,000 for the repair of that unit, so that they can move forward before it gets really cold.
All right. So, could I ask maybe for a slight tweak of your plan?
Yes.
To call for a committee meeting next week at 6:45, and I have a meeting with the mayor every week from 5:00 to 6:00, and I will discuss it with him. If he doesn't hear about it before, and in the meantime, you can reach out to him to see if there's any update on any quotes received for him to send down in, in his communication on the 18th. The piece we left out, in who's over there, is the police department's in the basement as well.
Yes.
And so, we can't have no AC and heat for, you know, I get the whole rent thing, but at the same time, we got city employees over there with no heat or AC in that building. And I think, while I appreciate the whole three-quote thing, I also appreciate the reason why they did what they did, but we, we have to resolve it, as you said. So, if we called for that committee meeting next week-
Yes.
If we don't have anything, you as the chair make a decision on whether or not to move forward, but I just think waiting two weeks is gonna be two weeks that they have to wait, and we have to fund it, then they can't put it out.
Well, the bigger issue, Counselor Cooper, is that you can't just order a rooftop air conditioning unit. It's a massive piece of equipment that will be shipped over the highways and require a crane to be lifted after the one on top of the roof is removed, and it's a three-day installation.
And I'm sure it's smaller than what's there.
I don't know.
I, I, I hope in the, over the years, however long this thing's been up there, that it, that it's smaller. I'm willing to bet it is, but I, I, I don't know.
And more energy efficient.
Certainly more energy efficient. Good point.
Yes, yes.
But thank you for adding that, Richard, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for the constructive contribution. I, I accept it. I think that's an excellent idea. So I will be calling for a committee meeting next week at 6:45, specifically to discuss this motion to approve the request of the mayor for a 10-ton split unit on the Shang Building. With that, I have no-
I was just gonna make a comment, if you want. A lot of times, especially in today's, you're involved in building and whatnot, and you're assessing. Everybody's out straight.
Yep.
Right? So, it could be very, very possible that nobody's interested in that job at this time. And it could be possible that the one quote, I think that's what you're gonna find, has been put out there and people just haven't been on. Not like it's been hidden.
I want the time to find out. And in one week, I promise you, I will.
Okay, well, that's better than two weeks and a week after that to go on.
I agree. I agree completely. I agree. It's a serious situation, and I don't want anyone to think that I don't recognize how serious it is. So with that, Counselor Dolan.
I just have one more thing. It, it's escaping me right now, but there's some bidding rule, there's some, I'm sorry, it's such a-
It's three quotes and take the lowest bidder.
Right, but there's, but isn't there some type of rule that you're supposed to get three bids?
Yes.
Like, and not, and-
Over $10,000, yes.
Right, so, are we doing anything wrong by not doing that right now?
Well, I'm sure we're doing it. Kathy Brown, Upper Purchasing is at Manchester.
That was my point. I just can't think of what I'm trying to, what the rule, what I read about the bidding process.
We'll dot I's, cross our T's, go by the rules.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to state and be upfront that I'm probably gonna speak to President Cooper, Cooper, about recusing myself from this particular vote.
Sure, yep.
As, especially the way it was thrown out there, that the registry's not paying any rent. I just wanna make sure that we're acting in the, with the utmost of clarity in this.
I wanna assure you that we are.
I, I'm talking for my own personal-
I don't, I understand.
As an employee.
I understand.
Thank you.
And I understand your position, and it's well understood.
Thank you.
So are there any other comments for the Capitol Improvements and City Development Committee? Seeing none, I'll extend the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order, all in favor?
Aye.
I declare the Capitol Improvements and City Development Committee adjourned at 8:43. I declare the Capitol Improvements and City Development Committee adjourned at 8:43. Thank you for a wonderful meeting.
I'd like to call Public Works Committee to order at 8:43.
Yes.
I have two items of business this evening to discuss from the docket of September 18, 2018. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor regarding a communication from Health Agent Alan Perry and the receipt of a sustainable materials recovery program municipal grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. The amount of the grant this fiscal year is approximately $49,000 in recycling dividend funds. The funds do not have to be spent in the fiscal year received and may be carried over to future years. In accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Attleboro, the mayor hereby requests this honorable body to approve expending such funds in any future grant amendments.
Second.
Thank you very much. So, pretty exciting. $49,000 from the Health Agents Department with—because we've maximized our reuse and our recycling, we've done a phenomenal job, the city—I shouldn't just say "we"—the Health Department has in educating the people, and we know there was a big article recently because recycling hasn't been going as well, but I mean, this states—they've gotten their word out there. They've done very, very well. $49,000 is a lot of money. So, kudos to them, and I'm happy to accept this grant. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Secondly, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor regarding a communication from Superintendent of Public Works Michael Tyler about the need for funds for parts to rebuild the conveyor system on the 2004 E-line sweeper. Therefore, the mayor hereby requests this honorable body transfer $5,670 from account 11241000-578300, citywide reserve fund for transfer to account 14201000-548040, Public Works Supplies Equipment. Upon approval, the available balance in reserve fund for transfer will be $324,396.17.
Second.
Thank you. So, we've had a lot of discussions. We sort of knew this was coming, right? I mean, he actually gave us a warning that, you know, it's going to—it may break down again, and here we are requesting more money, so we're up to about—I think we're over $21,000 on fixing this—
Is this the Franken?
—sweeper. Yep, it is. And, you know, they keep it going. The greatest thing about this is this is just for parts, and it's us that are repairing it. The problem is, it's downtime. So, it's off the roads, and the guys are—well, no, because it's mechanics that are fixing it, so they're not actually on the road. So, here we are. So, I ask that you all support this, please. And also, while I'm talking about Public Works, I'd also just like to mention that most of the streets have been finished. They've been doing their resurfacing. The only one that isn't done now is Pleasant Street, but the reason that it's not done is—and I just want people to understand this—there are seven different utilities that you have to wait for to come in and approve before they can do anything, so we're still waiting for that. Actually, they just got the final completion, and they thought that they were going to be able to resurface Pleasant Street Monday and Tuesday, yesterday and tonight, but because of the weather, they haven't. So, they hopefully are going to do it tomorrow night, starting at 9:30, and continue on to the next night. So, just a heads up on that, so Pleasant Street will, you know, be finished. But anyways, that—the street sweeper is, you know—I think we're going to give it a new name. All those in favor?
Aye.
Could I please make a comment?
Please, go ahead.
That sweeper you said was $21,000? Oh, you've spent on it so far?
So far, yes.
It's probably closer to 35 to 40 with some free parts put in. That should have been replaced when we had the opportunity, should have been renewed. That's my opinion.
I agree.
And that figure, that $21,000 figure you got from—that's pie in the sky. That probably doubled that amount. They robbed pots off of that to keep another one going.
Right. You are correct, Mr. Blair.
We should have—
But I'm just talking—I'm talking about what we've transferred over since I've been Public Works, just this year, since Mike Tyler has been superintendent. Just recently, this is the transfer amount, approximately $21,000. You are correct.
Ms. Hagme—yeah, Ms. Hagme—Ms. Jackson, that was probably double, if not more, that we've put into this sweeper and the downtime and whatnot. We had the opportunity to buy two, one through Chapter 90 and one through the city side. Should have been done. This is like throwing money in the ocean. You're never going to see it again.
He told us this—he stood before us and told us all that, and—
You've got to stop the bleeding sometime.
You do have to stop the bleeding.
We keep approving these $20,000, $20,000, keep it on the road. It gets—equipment, I know, okay? This piece of equipment probably shouldn't have been bought in the first place, was a used piece of equipment.
Well, but it's—I stand to disagree, because you know what? It's lasted this long, 2004, and they've been able to just keep it going, so we've been very fortunate. But we're also fortunate with the mechanics who work down at the Public Works yard. We're very fortunate about that. Yes, we have great help. Down there, we have great, great, great help. And I do want to mention one other thing. They did just go to a junkyard because a door fell off, and they needed a new door. The door actually has a landscaping name on it, so they just took that off. So, they had to replace it and put a door on there, but from the junkyard. Go ahead, Council Cooper, please.
Thank you. So, what I would say sort of about the should've, would've, could've—we could have done that, but there was nothing ever formally sent to this council about doing that.
You're right.
Right? So, we can sit here and be critical of ourselves, but at the same time, nobody sent a request to do that. We talked a lot about it, and if you really want it, send it down and see whether it goes up or it goes down. We talked a lot about doing it. We had a great presentation about where things stood, but there was never any request to buy it from Chapter 90 money. There was a suggestion to do it, but you can't do this with it, you can only do that, and whatnot, but there was never a formal request to buy a sweeper to replace this. There was a lot of talk about it, so I just want to be clear about that.
Be fully noted. Thank you.
Second, I do have another comment. I'm sorry I missed the recycle discussion, because I wanted to go check with Virginia on the date, but I did invite the Health Agent and Dr. Quinn are going to come to the meeting on September 18th to talk to us about trash and recycling, and we all just received—I want everybody to take note of your—did I just get my water bill in the mail? I think I—I don't like to open it at this time of the year, because we run the irrigation, so I have to slip that one through. But the—there was a new thing in it about recycling on bright orange paper. Please pay attention to it. We're going to be audited again. I talked to the mayor this evening about it. They do random audits about our contract performance, and we were in—up in close to 30% trash in the recyclables, and if it's not better, you know, they may want to take action. Waste management may want to take action if we're outside of performance, if we're in our contract.
Great to know. I'm glad you're coming.
So, you know, please remind everyone to pay attention to that recycling thing that just came in your bill, and the Health Agent and Dr. Quinn will be down to discuss trash and recycling and sort of what has changed over the year and sort of where we stand and what's working and what isn't, and what people need to pay attention to.
Thank you, President Cooper, for bringing that to our attention. Council Conti.
If I could have the last word. I'd be remiss by saying that because I'm chairman of Capitol Improvements and City Development, that if the city started a path to establish a capital improvements fund, it would be—it would be less painful to explore and purchase a new sweeper. But we have no capital improvement fund whatsoever. What we've been doing is buying capital improvement out of free cash each year on an as-needed basis, on an emergency basis, which is not the best practice for a city to follow, to maintain the property that it owns. So, this is more of a philosophical speech than it is relevant to your Elgin sweeper, which is becoming like a couple—an old man's sock who's been darned by his wife who's been married to for 60 years. It's not the same sock anymore. It's all new material over the course of 60 years. That's what's happening to our Elgin sweeper. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Deb, for so kindly. Wow. Great discussion. Again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And we address our adjournment at 8:53.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:53. Thank you.
Call the zoning and land use committee to order at 8:53. On my committee, it's just Council Galizio and myself, President Cooper. So, the first item I have from the docket of September 18, 2018. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor that the municipal council hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 16-2.2 of the Revised Ordinance after notice to abutters to lay out Rathburn Willard Drive and Brennan Way as public ways and accept said ways in any related drainage, water, or sewer facilities or easements pursuant to MasterCard Law, Chapter 82, Section 2, and Section 16-2.1 of the Revised Ordinances of the city, all as shown on a plan and profile entitled "City of Attleboro, Massachusetts' Layout Plan and Profile Rathburn Willard Drive and Brennan Way by Kessley Brothers/Kessley Boots Associates Incorporated, dated August 31, 2018, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet," which plan and profile have been deemed satisfactory to the Superintendent of Public Works. Call for the public hearing for October 2, 2018.
Second.
So, this is—motion's in order. This is fairly straightforward. Does anyone have any comments? Call for a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right. The second one isn't as straightforward. So, from the docket of June 19, 2018, I entertain a motion from Laurel Knoll Land Trust, 503 Oak Hill Ave., Attleboro, Mass. to rezone property located at Zero McDonnell Lane, Attleboro, Massachusetts, said premises being Assessor's Platte Number 101, Assessor's Lot Number 9, to be rezoned from Single Residence D to General Residence C. Said premises being 8.699 acres, referred to the planning board for— That's it.
Second.
Motion's in order. So, with this item, we've had the public hearing. We've received a ruling from the planning board, and I will read that ruling now. Dated August 14, 2018, to the Honorable Municipal Council, dear Council President and councilors, this is to certify that at the planning board meeting held on Monday, August 13, 2018, the planning board voted in favor, six ayes, two nays, one absent, to recommend that the municipal council approve the petition of Laurel Knoll Land Trust to rezone property located at Zero McDonnell Lane, more specifically Assessor's Lot Number 9, containing a land area of approximately 8.691 acres on Platte Number 101, from Single Residence D to General Residence C. The planning board is of the opinion that rezoning the property to General Residence C would not constitute spot zoning, would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and would be consistent with the character of the surrounding area. The planning board emphasizes that the proposed plan for the property, however, is significantly more dense than is appropriate and recommends that the proposed number of units be reduced. So, that was from the—from the planning board? And additionally, we've received—so, we've received an updated plan from the developer addressing the concerns of the density. They've reduced the total number of units from 48 individual—48 units, 24 buildings, down to 36 total units, or 18 individual units. In my mind, this still sounds dense, but everybody's received a copy of that new proposed plan. And then during the public hearing, if you guys remember, we were all presented with a petition from all of the residents on McDonnell Lane and a few others in the area arguing that they don't agree with this development. Additionally, we've received communication from the city planner regarding zoning considerations, his assessment of why this doesn't constitute spot zoning. I have some concerns with that, and we could bring it up when we talk about it in front of the full council, but everyone should have a copy of that, those considerations from the city planner. And that's about it. I think we can—we'll have a broader discussion in front of the full council. As a resident on Clifton Street, I think this is too dense. I think Clifton Street is dangerous enough with speeding issues, and it's dangerous to—the there aren't sidewalks on there, so it's tough to walk dogs, to go jogging, all of that, so adding more additional vehicle traffic there, I don't think makes sense, personally. But we can discuss that in front of the full council. This is just voting it out of committee, so are there any other comments regarding this?
Mr. Chairman, I'm very disappointed in the planning board's decision, because I have read the four legal cases that Council Casey sent to the council at my request, and they're a difficult read. I'm not a lawyer. I've read them once. I can see where I have issues and where I have support in his four cases. By the time we get to a regular meeting to discuss this, I plan on presenting to the council an analysis of what those four cases are and how they are relevant or not relevant to this particular petition, but I have come away from reading the four cases, and I still believe that the 36 units and 18 buildings at the end of a single-family zone is not the spirit and intent of cluster zoning. The spirit and intent of cluster zoning, Mr. Chairman, is like Bishop Farms over by Bliss Dairy, where there is an entrance off of a main road that is dedicated to the cluster zone. It takes you to that cluster zone that is a cluster of buildings isolated by land surrounding it. In this case, on Laurel Mill, what we have is we have a single-family residence street that suddenly empties into the cluster, which brings a total different scenario to the street supplying the cluster. So, it's not—in my opinion, it's not a true cluster zoning. And further, I can't help believe that the 8.66 acres are being intensely developed for the financial benefit of the developer, which is falling under the definition of spot zoning. So, if the developer had made a proposal to the council to extend Manchester Drive with more single-family homes along the highway and through the eight acres, I wouldn't have any issue with it, because it wouldn't call for rezoning. But because he's looking for such an intense development, which is financially motivated to benefit the developer, and because I do not see the support in the four cases of the supply to me by Council Casey after a first read, I find two cases irrelevant, the North Attleboro case and one of the others. I will not be supporting this when it comes in front of the regular council, and I plan on having a very stern and succinct layout of why I am in opposition of the plan, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. And I very much agree with you, and I encourage everybody to read what Gary sent to us, but also read it with an open mind, because I disagree. I do—I agree with you that I think this does sound like spot zoning. I think it is giving a small parcel of land singled out special and privileged treatment. I mean, it's clearly not giving special—it's clearly not in favor of the residents in the area. And additionally, when he talks about it's not a big deal, because we're only going from 20,000 square foot lot sizes to 16,000 square foot lot sizes, then, oh, it's similar. Well, the lot sizes might be similar, but the density is a lot denser, because we're going from single-family homes to multifamily. And additionally, the four examples quoted in there were all for properties that abutted North Main Street, which is clearly different than the end of a dead-end street where we're trying to put this. So, I agree with you. Other comments? All right. So, this is just a vote out of committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. So, then the two other quick items of business are just—the first one is to mention that the recreational marijuana—or adult-use marijuana moratorium expires on Saturday, September 15th, so just be aware of that. And then the second item, I had planned to bring out the discussion of Canetec Medicinals and their request for a special permit. We're still waiting on some additional clarification on their application and a couple items, so I'm not going to bring that one out today, but I hope to hear back from the city planner by next week. That concludes my business. Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zoning and Land Use Committee is adjourned at 9:03.
I call to order Transportation and Traffic Committee at 9:03. Mr. Conti, Ms. Reynolds is on my committee. I do—I have four motions to strike off of my docket. Um, I do, um, I have four motions to, to strike off of my docket. I want a pleasant reminder that next week, September eighteenth, is the public hearing with regards to the proposed Beagle Club Road ordinance, um, so that takes place. I did have my meeting with the Traffic Study Commission, uh, this past Thursday on the sixth. Um, it was nice to see everybody after having the summer off. Um, they did not submit a recommendation with regards to Beagle Club Road at that time, and we don't meet again until, uh, the first Thursday in October, so I think it's October fourth, give or take, so, um, if you were looking for that. I'm also waiting for responses from the police department and the fire department and conservation and everybody else on this one. From the docket of April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, I make a motion to strike a communication dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, for resident Phyllis Carter of West Reed, addressing speed limit enforcement and alternatives.
Second.
Thank you. At this time, um, you, you know, we're always under review for West Street. We, we're fortunate enough to have a counselor who has a, has a front view of West Street and the traffic concerns that she plays down there, but at this time, um, you know, there is a really, um, there is no particular solution in that location for, at the moment, so the suggestion was to make a motion to strike. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Uh, I make a motion to, from the docket of April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, I make a motion to strike, um, to reduce the speed from forty miles an hour to thirty miles an hour on County Street in the area of seven twenty-one County. Additionally, research for the traffic, traffic can be limited on County Street.
Second.
Thank you. So if you're familiar where seven twenty-one is, it's, it's down, uh, you know, we're, we're coming up County Street. There's sightlines that are beautiful, the road is quite wide, um, and the recommendation of, so to submit for a reduction in speed, we would have to submit to the state, and, um, that's always a cautionary tale, when it could come back and it could actually go higher, so, and it would be implemented as higher. So, uh, for this particular location, um, it was suggested to kind of let lying dogs lie and, and leave it the way it is. Any questions or concerns?
No, I'm comfortable with leaving it as it is myself.
Okay.
Good.
Excellent. Uh, I move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Let's see, from the docket of March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, I make a motion to strike a communication dated February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, from Diane Frederico regarding the speed limit on County Street.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Same, um, that lower part of County Street, again, we do have some new development in that location, but if we submit to the state, and with the street width and the sightlines, um, the response coming back could actually increase it, um, and I think it'll be good, it's appropriate, um, for us to kind of see what the practical impact is in that area with the new development, and hopefully at some point in the near future, we'll get our, uh, an appropriation from the administration, uh, for that solar light that we've been so desperately waiting for, um, down and, and that Reed Street location, that'll ma- make people pay better attention. Any questions or concerns? I move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. From the docket of January second, two thousand and eighteen, I make a motion to strike the parking situation on Stop's Drive be examined to ensure the safe passage of vehicular traffic, including emergency apparatus as well as pedestrians. Also that no parking to corner signs be added on Stop's Drive at its intersection with both Holcott Street and Commonwealth Avenue, um, and was referred to the traffic study for a study of recommendation.
Second.
Thank you very much, Counselor. So, we did have a site visit at this location. This was new business brought in by, um, President Cook, uh, prior to his exit of the council. Um, we did meet out there multiple times. We had a site visit with Traffic Study Commission with the administration of Bishop Fan. Um, there are certain times during the year where things are going to be a little congested on Stop's Drive. Uh, the DPW did replace some signs with the no parking here to corner that twenty feet. Um, there's been, um, uh, increase in police patrols in that location. Um, I don't believe at this time, you know, during football games and during graduation, and at the end of the school year when more kids have their license than don't, there's going to be congestion over in that area, and there's, there's the ability, um, to accommodate that, and, um, I, I appreciate the administration, um, at Bishop Fan for enforcing and reminding the students regularly on proper parking protocols in that area. Um, so I'm sure at some point in time, this will probably trickle back in as new business, but it's, at this moment, what was asked to be taken care of has, has been taken care of. Any questions or concerns?
None.
Wonderful. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Alright, thank you very much. Um, I don't have anything else for traffic and transportation. Again, public hearing next week. Um, I'd make a motion to adjourn at nine oh nine. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned.
I'd like to call Budget Appropriations to order at nine oh nine. I have four quick motions tonight from the docket of September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I approve the request of the mayor to reimburse a fire department employee for the replacement of mandatory uniform pots that were damaged on duty during fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Therefore, the mayor requests this honorable body transfer nineteen dollars ninety-nine cents from account one two two zero one zero 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 dash five five eight three one zero, fire uniforms to account one two two zero one zero 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 dash five seven eight zero two zero, fire previous, uh, bills previous years.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. So article, uh, let's see, what do we, so we're looking in the collective bargaining agreement between the Attleboro Firefighters Local eight forty-eight and the City of Attleboro requires the city to replace any portion of an employee's uniform, um, which is damage to the performance of the job. It's nineteen dollars ninety-nine cents, um, but just for the backup on, uh, July twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, uh, the fire department received reimbursement request for the nineteen ninety-nine for replacement of mandatory uniform pants, that were damaged on duty. Alright, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Um, from the docket of September, uh, eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to pay a previous year bill in the amount of eight hundred two dollars eighty-five cents waste management per request from Solid Waste Administrator Jennifer, uh, Jessica Signarella. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There is no transfer of funds needed to pay this bill as there are sufficient funds in twenty-six oh four.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Cobus. Yeah, so they have the funds available. This bill was missed due to an incorrect mailing address, so clerical, they have the bills where it's previous year, they just need us to approve it. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Third, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor regarding the need to pay a previous year bill in the amount of sixty-four dollars twenty cents from the Solid Waste Department to the City of Attleboro. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There is no transfer of funds needed to pay this bill as there is sufficient funding in twenty-six, uh, oh four.
Second.
Thanks, Todd. Again, uh, prior year bill, twenty-three dollars twenty-three cents, uh, to the City of Attleboro for water service at the compost center, and to pay the amount of forty dollars ninety-five cents to the City of Attleboro for sewer service at the compost center. Um, payment will rectify the timing of these invoices into the correct fiscal year. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, motion passes. I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion now passes.
You actually have to.
I'm kind of fast forward right now. We're, we're coming along, this is nice. Finally, uh, from the docket of September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor regarding Executive Director of the Contributory Retirement Board Leslie Ring's request for funds to cover the expense of an employee during his military deployment. Therefore, the mayor hereby requests this honorable body to transfer twenty-eight thousand ninety-nine dollars fifty-one cents from account one one two four one zero 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 dash five seven eight three zero zero, citywide reserve fund for transfer to account one one two four one zero 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 dash five one seven three one five, citywide military retirement credit. Upon approval, the available budget in the reserve fund for transfer will be three hundred thirty thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and seventeen cents.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Cobus. This is really straightforward, but I think it's especially apropos on this day to, um, thank this young man for his service as he's on military leave from his position as a patrolman with the Attleboro Police Department from July sixth, two thousand and fourteen to July second, two thousand and eight. While he was out on military leave, the, um, police department was paying the difference between his military pay and his salary, he would have been receiving as a patrolman. Retirement deductions were withheld from the reduced salary he was receiving and deposited into the retirement system. In order to make the patrolman whole at the time of retirement, the city is required to deposit the retirement system deductions of the twenty-eight thousand ninety-nine dollars fifty-one cents that would have been withheld from the difference of his military pay and regular salary as a patrolman. So it's to, um, make this young man whole, and again, um, want to thank him for his service, both, uh, with the military as well as the Attleboro Police Department. I'm sorry?
And it's contractual.
Absolutely, but still, it's more about to thank you for your service, especially on this day. Uh, any other questions?
Obviously, thank you for his service, and definitely appreciate that. Um, and thank you for your due diligence in explaining that, because I, I was trying to figure out last week when this came before us, why this was coming out of, or going into the military retirement credit, so that all makes sense now, and so I definitely appreciate that.
Alright, any other questions, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I would look for an adjournment at nine fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at nine fifteen.
I'd like to call to order the Licenses Committee at nine fifteen. Committee members are Dolan, Jackson, and Perica. I have one item tonight, if you're all ready. I entertain a motion to approve the Class Two amended license application for Stateline Auto Brokers of eleven fifteen Washington Street, Attleboro, to add an additional lot at thirty-one Chadia Street with forty-one display spaces, one hundred and three storage spaces, and eight employee parking spaces.
Second.
What do you think about the same thing? Right behind you. President Cooper?
Thank you. Um, so, um, it's, you know, no surprise to anyone that we have had issues at, um, Stateline Auto Brokers regarding this. I will, uh, you know, I guess I've been bold tonight about Attleboro before Manziel, Attleboro before Green Tree, and keep the number of cars that you're supposed to have on your license, on your lot, or your permit's going to be revoked, period, amen, hallelujah. I do not think that this council, uh, uh, as Barry said, to prevent it from being a headline today, I don't want it to be that we're, um, not business friendly, but you gotta follow the rules, man. You gotta follow the rules. I feel like I'm at home to the thirteen-year-old. You can't do that, 'cause you can't do that. Cut it out. Keep the number of cars that's on your license where you're supposed to keep them, and stop doing this, or you will not have a license in the City of Attleboro. I have sought from the city solicitor the revocation process for us to all have. I will reach out to her again by email to ensure that we, you all have that to review before the next meeting, um, because we cannot continue to do this, otherwise it appears as if we're not doing anything. And, and everybody starts to, um, push the envelope a little bit, and Counselor Dolan has been all over, um, any complaints that she has received either from us or from constituents about, uh, and I can think of four or five, um, off the top of my head, that are not following the rules. So what I want to be in the paper, George, not here, but somebody at the Sun Chronicle who's watching, is that we cannot continue the practice of not following our license if we have a Class Two license in the City of Attleboro. Do what you said you were going to do, and you won't have any problem, but Counselor Dolan is out looking, Counselor Perica, all of us go by these places and say, you know, hey, what, what, how is this happening? What's happening? And, and, um, we, we, we just cannot continue to be, um, uh, uh, you know, I'll say somewhat misled in, um, what the expectation is, uh, for, um, this particular license. We have talked about this far too many times. Um, we've, we've all visited it from time to time, most recently Vice President Perica, Chairman Dolan, and myself. I had a site visit there, we met with the engineer, it was all, all, um, all nice and, and good, and, you know, there were a lot of commitments made, but live by your commitments, or you cannot, you will not have a license from the City of Attleboro. We will have to move forward with a revocation hearing, and that concludes my comments, thank you.
Counsel Perica? Thank you. So I, whatever President Cooper just said, ditto. One. Um, I, we have talked about this far too much. Um, I've also been, I, it's, it's beyond me that for someone to come in front of us and pay attorney's fees and all the things that they do, and to very emotionally tell us that they've invested all of their blood, sweat, and tears, and every dollar, and every penny, and every, everything into it, but the last thing, the only thing that they need to do is comply with their license so that they can stay in business, and they repeatedly have, have repeatedly refused to do so. I, I, I struggle with how, I mean, I will happily put this out in, in front of the full council. I would like to hear what the rest of our, our, our fellow counselors have to say about this. It's something that I'm not really excited about because I feel like I've been lied to repeatedly, and I don't enjoy that, like household policy, nice matters, don't be sneaky. That might be in the paper tomorrow. It is what it is at this point, but, um, I, you know, I'll happily put this forward for more discussion and having this be, um, but I would like our, my fellow counselors to think about when there's business in front of your committee and you're forever being, you know, it, how, like, how would you handle this, or how would you want it to be handled? And I don't think that, um, mandating, well, I mean, issuing a license, you're mandated to behave. I don't think that us holding them to what is regulated by them, and not only by us, but there are regulations from the Zoning Board of Appeals for them to be able to have these extra lots that we have to pay attention to as well, um, I don't think that makes us not business friendly. If we're, it, I, it just doesn't quantify that, like, we're still business friendly. We're trying to, we've bent over backwards, we are clearly business friendly because we've bent over backwards repeatedly for, for this particular dealership. So I will give this my support. You'll probably hear me say something similar next week, um, and, um, I'll see how I feel next. Honestly, I'm not really sure how I'd be voting on, on, about this in front of the full council because of it, because of the emotion and the.
Uh, so before I get to the other councils, I just want to add one thing. I did speak to, um, Attorney Casey. I know everybody was here when he had stated, um, when they were here, uh, for the public hearing, that he would draw something up, you know, like a promise or whatever. I, I wasn't super interested in it, but I know a couple counselors felt like it would be a good idea, so I contacted Attorney Casey, and he's going to draw something up to that effect. So I just wanted to let y'all know that I, I did reach out to him to get that if, if that's what, um, some of you would like, and, um, you know, sometimes I get in my car and my map will automatically take, if I go ahead in that direction, my map will take me to that address. So I don't want this to be my third job. If we do approve this, if, if we do approve to amend their license, 'cause I don't want to spend my life down there, counting cars, 'cause now they're going to have an extra hundred, so it's going to take me even more time to count all these cars.
Sure.
So I, as the chair, I fully intend to hold their feet to the fire, and I fully intend to be on top of it, and I fully intend to proceed with revoking their license if they don't, don't abide by the rules.
So my follow-up to, I, well, my comment with regards to Attorney Casey drafting up a letter saying they pretty promised, fingers crossed, pinky swear, we're not going to do this. In my opinion, when you sign, when you have a, a site plan and an engineer come down and they make the determination as to what you're limited to, and then you sign the, the application for a license, that's what that is.
That's what I said last meeting. I said, we don't need their permission to revoke their license, because when, but, but everybody was like.
But that's the comment, an extra piece of paper that says that they, that they promised to, that they're going to actually abide by, that's what your signature is on the license.
Amen.
I don't need anything more than that, but apparently we do.
Um, I, I'm sorry. Counselor Galizia.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't know who's next.
So we, we, we've seen this situation before, different names, unfortunately tends to be the same industry. No offense, Mr. Blair. But we want the right business.
There's only, there's only a couple of things lower than the used car salesman.
And politicians.
Right.
So we want the right business, we want to be careful how we handle it, because we don't want to set the precedent. And the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. And I just want to end with a, very much a Mark Cooper-type story. So when we were growing up, we had a wood burning stove, and my brothers and I thought it'd be fun to drop crayons on there and watch the crayons melt, and my mother's like, stop, they're going to burn themselves. My father says, let them get burned, that'll teach them. So I'm hoping these guys will learn without having to get burned, but the reality of the matter is, how much time have we spent on this business? You know? I mean, and we all feel bad, we don't want to be responsible for anyone's livelihood, but on the other side of the door, on the other side of the coin, you know there are people watching this, saying, okay, if they're getting away with this, here's what I want to do. So we just need to make sure that, you know, we're not looking at this through the wrong lens, which is, we want to be business friendly. We want the right business, and we expect that the business is out of here, play by the rules that everyone else has to play by. Counsel Blair.
I don't want to get into it, but I, I think that letter, I do want to get into it, that letter that Casey's drawing up, right? I know it's not anything that we've done in the past or whatnot, but I agree with you folks, right? Enough's enough. But I'm not, at this point, ready to shut off a person's livelihood. They sign that, we get a copy of it, it's sitting there, we know what revocation process is, they know what it is, and especially the young lady that came before us. I was in that business for a long time, not as grand as that, but I was in it. And I know, it's not the stereotype, but I know the type of people that are in that business, and some of them just, they were, they're worse than politicians, but I am forgiving them or her one last shot. But I want to see it in writing. I'd like to have it with us to say to the rest of the people out there, this is what we expect, and there won't be any second, third, or fourth chances. And as Mr. Delisio said, I know you've dealt with this one, but we've dealt with many in the past, and they constantly overstep the number of cars. And it's not up to us, I feel sorry for you, I don't think it's up to us to get down and count cars. That's zoning enforcement. So if there's a problem, not to throw work on another department, but that zoning enforcement, you shouldn't have to be there.
Well, if it's cold out, I'll just... During the cold months, give Bill a call.
He's, yeah, he's got more work than he can handle.
Now, I know.
It's, it's a tough situation, but I think you've had enough, we've had enough, and this is just the straw that's going to break the camel's back if they, if it's not adhered to. We just follow the rules of revocation and go through with it. My opinion.
So Counselor Conti, is this where you...
So I'm going to come out and tell you, it's flat out right now, I'm voting against this. No.
I'm not, there's also one...
N-O, no. This person is not the proper person to do business in the City of Attleboro. I've said that before. I received a nice nasty letter anonymously as a result of it. What does that tell you? Sometimes city councils have to say no. Sometimes the job requires that when you look at the facts of the case, that you've drawn a line in the sand, and that sand line is completely obliterated by abuse, that enough is enough, that there has to be an end, that we have to stand up for our laws, because our laws keep civilization functioning. And it's people who say no, like a police officer gives you a ticket. He doesn't want to give you a ticket. He has to give you a ticket. The tears didn't throw me. In every trial I've been in, when someone on the stand starts to cry, the judge throws them out of the courtroom. This counselor, this, he behaves like a council, but he's a lawyer, Ed Casey's, offered to give us another instrument to bond this person, is completely worthless, totally worthless. Why you can't see through this, and why you can't take a firm position to vote against this applicant is seriously beyond me. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Can I just add? So the letter to do it, if we accept the letter, you do it for one, you're going to have to do it for all, so...
Can I respond?
Well, it's got community, you know...
Listen, I, I didn't even agree to this letter. I thought the letter was foolish. I was doing it for y'all. No, you guys are like, what the letter, what the letter? I was like, I don't need a letter. I'll do it, I'll revoke it, I don't need a letter.
I've got your back on this. That's why I...
So you guys are all like, oh, the letter's not going to do anything, I'm like, I didn't even want it.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry, I, I'm, okay.
So as it's been well determined that Councilor Dolan did not want the letter, the reality remains for those that do, if we do the letter, for one, you're going to have to do it for all. It sets a precedent, and the reality of the matter is, I think it's a very fine line between a straw that breaks a camel's back and what opens the floodgates. I think Counselor Conti, you're absolutely right. Write that down, George, Jay and Rick are agreeing, but, you know, we have to take a stand, and I mean, I'm sorry, I feel bad, we don't want to take the person's business away, but you've got a full-time job, you've got a family, you can't be going out there, you know? The building department's overstretched, I mean, we, when someone comes down and they fill out an application, it's good faith. When they're awarded the license, there's your signature, there's your license. Like, it blows my mind, you know, it's like, just do what you're supposed to do, act like an adult. It comes to a point where we all just have to adult, we might not enjoy it, but we have to act like adults, and that concludes my comments.
Agreed. It's just like when you have a job, you do what you're supposed to do, or you get fired, period. You do what you're supposed to do, or you lose your income. It's no different.
Thank you. Rick, I truly also appreciate your comments, because I think at some point, there is a line in the sand, and I, this is one that I'm struggling with, and I want, I have to remind myself that this is an application to amend his exist, we're not taking his ability to do business in the city away. So do we say no to amend? Perhaps? And then behave? And then come back?
Right.
And then say, ha-ha, Richard Conti, Mark Cooper, whoever said, no, they're not going to, they're not going to do this tonight, or they're struggling with it. I have been doing what a proper person who has a license is supposed to be doing for the last X period of time. But what is, what is sort of confusing this issue is all the other things that have been happening to that area and his tenancy in certain areas that he has chosen to expand his business. They didn't work, and they backfired like an elephant gun, because he pushed the buttons, pushed the limits where he shouldn't have pushed, because we told him not to do it again. So I'm really having a hard time with this. This is an amendment, and I'm not saying, I'm not going to say as clearly as Counselor Conti just did, but I'm not feeling good about it. I'm not feeling good about the amendment to this application for someone who has demonstrated repeatedly, as recently as just a few months ago, that, that they don't care what we tell them, and they don't care that they put whatever number they put on that application, they're going to do whatever they want. And I'm struggling with that, and that concludes my comments. Thank you for the opportunity to address your committee again. Thank you.
Anyone else like to say anything? Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, and I'd like to adjourn License Committee meeting at 9:33. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the City Property and Claims Committee. I already forgot, at nine, to order at 9:34. Present for committee is myself, Counselor Blair, and Counselor Holm. So I have two motions tonight. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor regarding a copia that the Council on Aging would like to declare surplus. Therefore, the mayor hereby requests this honorable body to declare the following as surplus and available for disposition. Arigo Alficio MPC 2050 color copia, the serial number is V2294901071. The meter reading is black and white, 278,144 copies, in color copies, and 106,559. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, so all those in favor?
Aye.
No one in opposition? Okay, there are, I can't, that motion passes. From the docket of September 18, 2018, I kept looking over for you, Pia. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor regarding surplus items that the water department would like to declare surplus. Therefore, the mayor hereby requests this honorable body to declare the following as surplus and available for disposition. Quantity: 200 used water meters, 200 pounds of pipe removed from service during repair of main brakes, one backflow prevention device failed and removed from service, one pre-treatment chain drive poor condition, and three Halma Robicon 300 horsepower VFDs, model number ID-PM-PWM obsolete, non-functioning, were removed from service. Second. Thank you. Again, I think it's all pretty self-explanatory, they're just different types of machinery that's used, and they're no longer of value. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that motion passes, and those are the two things, that's all I have for my motions this evening, so I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Second. And I will adjourn at 9:36. Thank you.
I call the Personnel and Human Service Committee to order at 9:37. Committee members are myself, Counsel Reynolds, and Counselor Blair. I have, if you can bear with me, it's a little bit long, and hopefully I can leave the reading for, for the full council. So from the docket of September 18, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor regarding the transfer request for the ratified collective bargaining agreements between the City, the Attleboro Municipal Clerks Association, the Attleboro Laborers Association Local 1144 Laborers, and the Attleboro Laborers Association Local 1144 DPW for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020. The administration believes the agreements are in the best interest of the employees and the taxpayers. Therefore, the mayor respectfully requests this honorable body to transfer $206,572... Oh, sorry, let me start over. $206,572.05 from account 11241000578350, Citywide Reserve Fund for Labor Negotiations in order to fund the collective bargaining agreements to the following. Do I have to read all that?
The committee has to read all the account numbers, yeah.
Okay, I just, account 1121100051300, Mayor Lump Sum Retro, $850. Account 11351000513001, Auditing, Accounting Lump Sum Retro, $2,550. Account 11411000513001, Assessor's Lump Sum Retro, $1,700. Account 115451000513001, Treasurer Lump Sum Retro, $850. Account 11461000513001, Collector Lump Sum Retro, $2,550. Account 11521000513001, Personnel Lump Sum Retro, $1,700. Account 11611000513001, Clerk Lump Sum Retro, $850. Account 12101000513001, Police Lump Sum Retro, $3,400. Account 12201000513001, Fire Lump Sum Retro, $1,700. Account 12401000513001, Inspection Lump Sum Retro, $4,250. Account 14201000513001, Public Works Lump Sum Retro, $15,300. Account 15101000513001, Health Lump Sum Retro, $850. Account 15431000513001, Veterans Lump Sum Retro, $850. Account 16101000513001, Library Lump Sum Retro, $850. Account 16301000513001, Recreation Lump Sum Retro, $5,950. Account 16501000513001, Park Lump Sum Retro, $14,450. Account 11211... Oh, thank you, it's okay. 000514030, Mayor Longevity is $100. Account 11351000514030, sorry, Auditing Account Longevity, $150. Account 11411000514030, Assessor Longevity, $200. Account 11461000514030, Collector Longevity, $300. Account 11611000514030, Clerk Longevity is $100. Account 11... Oh, sorry, account 12101000514030, Police Longevity is $150. Account 12201000514030, Fire Longevity is $200. Account 12401000514030, Inspection Longevity is $350. Account 14201000514030, Public Works Longevity is $100. Account 15101000514030, Health Longevity is $200. Account 15431000514030, Veterans Longevity is $200. And then account 16301000514030, Recreation Longevity is $800. Account 16501000514030, Park Longevity is $825. From account 112110005110, Mayor Salary is $2,485.29. Account 11351000511000, Audit Accounting Salary, $5,683.61. Account 11411000511000, Assessor Salary, $3,410.50. Account 11451000511000, Treasurer Salary, $1,545.76. Account 11461000511000, Collector Salary, $5,240.23. Account 11521000... Account 11521000511000, Personnel Salary, $3,091.83. Account 11611000511000, Clerk Salary, $1,700 -- sorry, $1,728.43. Account 12201000511000, Fire Salary, $3,639.20. Account 12401000511000, Inspection Salary, $11,685.30. Account 12401000511000, Public Work Salary, $39,507.61. Account 15411000511000, Counsel on Aging Salary is $1,238.78. Account 15431000511000, Veteran Salary, $2,014.14. Account 16101000511000, Library Salary, $1,570.60. Account 16301000511000, Recreation Salary, $14,430.19. Account 16501000511000, Park and Salary, $35,705.39. Additionally, the mayor respectfully requests the honorable body to transfer $58,023.68 from account 6000578350, Waste Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Labor Negotiations, and $51,749.86 from account 6574010, Waste Enterprise Fund Insurance, in order to fund this collective bargaining agreement to the following. Account 600051300, Waste Water Enterprise Fund Lump Sum Retro, $28,475. Account 6000514030, Waste Enterprise Fund for Longevity, $4,670. Account 6000511000, Waste Water Enterprise Fund Salary, $76,628.54. Moreover, the mayor respectfully requests this honorable body to transfer $39,904.94 from account 6100578350, Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund Labor Negotiations, and $54,000 --
Forty-five.
Oh, sorry, thank you, $45,468.30. Why did you just say nothing? No, I'm just kidding. All right, so forty -- let me start over. $45,486.30 from account 6100574010, Water Enterprise Fund Insurance, in order to fund this collective bargaining agreement to the following. 610051300, Water Enterprise Fund Lump Sum Retro, $21,250. Account 6100514030, Water Enterprise Fund Longevity, $2,315. And account 6100511000, Water Enterprise Fund Salary, $61,825.97. Thank you.
Good job.
I think you made a mistake back there.
You did, you did. I'm sure I was like, what if I don't get a second? No. So this was a lot, but I have -- I talked a lot to Beth about this, and I wanted to kind of fill everybody in on what I learned about this process. So I did -- I hope everybody got the email of the actual agreement, the contracts that were completed, because it was more than one. And what I will say is, one of the questions that I asked was, was this budgeted in? So were we aware of this? And the answer I received, so for future budgets, these items were partially budgeted with the Reserve Fund for Labor Negotiations. As the final contract terms were unknown at the time, the budget was sent to the council, and this reserve fund was not designed to be a funding source for the full cost of the contracts that were ratified after July 1st. So free cash, once certified in the fall, was designed to be the other source of funding. So that was the response I received about if this had been planned. But I want to talk about the lump sum versus the retro. So the lump is from fiscal year 18, and it's based on a 2% salary. And the retro starts from July of -- so it's fiscal year 19. So July is when the retro started. The other thing is, is that from -- just to give -- so these labor negotiations are based on 222, so 2% increase each year. In the past, so fiscal year 15, 16, and 17, it was 433, which is really hard to maintain at times. So I think that it seemed like these negotiations were pretty smooth, I would say. I asked if Beth could kind of explain the lump sum, why they were different numbers, and basically, even based on salary. So if somebody's only working part-time at the library, their lump sum is not going to be equal to a full-time employee at the library. So it's all based on salary. And things that kind of are a little bit different, the police are getting their uniforms cleaned now, so although we have -- there's some money set aside for that, it's not known what the cost is going to be for that process yet, or what that process is even going to look like. And the other thing is, is that first responders for the police used to receive $500, and now they're going to be receiving $1,000 per member for that. So I believe that that's in a stipend. The other piece is, is that when we see things that are stipend, sometimes people assume everybody gets it. So for instance, for the police, they have like an evidence room stipend, and that's only really for one officer that's getting that. So sometimes when she -- Beth wanted us to understand from the personnel office that sometimes when you see that, we assume that everybody's getting that, and that's not necessarily the case. So to just kind of ask that follow-up question. And the other thing that I know I'm kind of all over the place, and I'm trying to give a little bit of a summary of what we discussed, is that the crossing guards actually aren't a union, but we -- the city actually treats them similar, like that they have an agreement with us as well, almost like they are a union, but they're not technically a union. Does anyone have any comments or questions or anything I can --
No, just thank you for your work and finding out the information that you did find out. One thing that struck me as you were reading it is that $45,846.03 coming from insurance, from the Water Department, we could just find out, we expect that savings citywide, that seems like a lot of money in a short period of time for the insurance. Did we overestimate what we thought that insurance was going to cost for fiscal 19? Are we going to be back to the drawing board asking for money for insurance? Just the very last one shows it coming from the Water Enterprise Fund Insurance. Some of it comes from Labor Fund Negoti -- and maybe they just didn't have enough, so they needed to find the money elsewhere, but that seems high to me from that account. That's my only question or comment.
Okay, I can get some more clarification on that. Are there any other -- anything else that's jumping out for anybody at all? I learned a lot about the process, but yeah, so we can certainly talk about it in full council, and I'll get some more information on that. Anyone else hearing? No other comments?
Sure.
I move to --
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And then that will be it for the business tonight for my commit --
Or you could -- look, did you want to announce the kickoff of the Highland Country Club committee stuff?
Oh, yes. Thank you. I actually did want to. I have the -- thank you. So the public hearings starting tomorrow, Wednesday, at 7:00 PM here, and then the next one, so it's September 12th, which is tomorrow, at 7:00 PM, and then the next meeting is September 26th, 7:00 PM, also here. And then there's a Saturday meeting for folks who struggle to get here during the week. So it's Saturday, September 29th, at 10:00 AM. So those are the opportunities. And I believe people can also submit in writing if they'd like, or they can come to talk. So there's some options there as well. And that would --
So, excuse me, that's a public hearing? Is that what you're just saying?
Yes.
Those are public, so they've been online, you know, I mean, they're in the newspaper. People know they can come. They're listed. This is just you telling us, is that what it is?
Yes.
But just reminding the public.
Yes.
Is that the committee that was appointed?
Yes.
Reading, and they'll take public input?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Okay. Would you please make a copy of that for me?
Sure. Yes, I definitely can.
Everybody.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you. Okay, so that would be it. So I call for adjournment?
Yeah.
At 9:55?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I just wanted to do ordinance, is that okay? I don't have any business for Jules, this committee.
You don't?
No. So for ordinance and elections and legislative matters, there's no -- there won't be a committee meeting tonight. There's no business. However, there is some talk about we're working on the senior tax to see if we can help seniors with their income tax, I guess, or?
Tax evasion.
Tax evasion, thank you. So we're in the works with that, and hopefully we'll have something in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Reporting for Public Safety Emergency Management Committee. I have no business to bring forward this evening, but I would like this opportunity. I talked to Chief Hegney today, and he had asked previously not to mention it, but evidently the DA has taken his gag order off the incident in South Atterboro with the two police officers that were involved in the shooting. I won't mention any names tonight, because I would like to bring them forward in front of the council to recognize them properly. Also, both officers are out on leave because of this incident. On behalf of our committee and the city council, Public Safety Committee, and the city council as a whole, and the constituents, I'd like to personally thank these two young officers for performing the way they did under those circumstances, and by doing so, more than likely protected a loss of life further down the line. I mean, this --
No question.
This person wasn't out to say hello.
Right.
You know, and these two young officers performed their duty to the utmost, right to how they were trained, in my opinion, in my opinion. It was a perfect shoot. They did what they were supposed to do. They protected us. They were out there doing their job to protect the citizens of Atterboro and the people walking the streets. They are on leave, and hopefully they return to duty as soon as possible, as long as they're comfortable returning. That's a traumatic experience they must have gone through. I can't imagine coming on a normal, not a normal situation, but for them, a normal stop-and-question type thing, and to be opened fire upon with an automatic weapon. You know, two of those shells went through the windshield of one of the cruisers and lodged in the headrest. And he got out just in time. So I imagine it's traumatic for both of them. I've never been through it. Todd, you probably have more experience with that type of situation than any of us here, but you just don't bounce back. You need time to get yourself in order and feel comfortable about going back. So hopefully, they feel comfortable, and we get them back, and I want to thank them very much for their services.
Well said.
Yes.
Well said, in the only way that you could. You know, I mean, you've long been a proponent of the -- an advocate for the police department. I think we all echo your concerns, and one thing that you always talk about is the grant writing ability of those police office -- that the police department has. A lot of their training comes as a result of grants that they're able to get.
Well, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, there was a training grant, right? Part of those grants, or the way they're trained, they survived down there that day.
Yep.
You know, it could have been, you know, it could have been something none of us want to happen. And I think all of us and the people at home, when you see a police officer around the street, and he's doing his job, even if he's giving you a ticket, because evidently you did something wrong, thank him for their service. You know, if they're polite, and they're doing their job, and they're protecting us, thank them, the way we thank our army personnel, our people at service in the armed forces. They're out there every single day, and we lose track. We thank a person like myself for growing up in Atterboro, grew up in Atterboro. It's a different world out there from when I was a kid, or even 30 years ago, 40 years ago. These officers in Atterboro aren't out there just giving parking tickets and speeding tickets. This world has changed. When they leave their house in the morning, and I know I'm repeating it, and they say goodbye to their kids and their wives, every situation that comes up, they have a shot at not going home. And this is an incident that brings it close to home, because we read it in the paper every day about an officer being killed or shot in the line of duty answering a call. And I think we don't look like it can happen here, but this came so close to happening. And I just want to commend these two officers for performing the duty the right way, by the book, and the training that they have in the -- from over in that department. And I know, I mean, Kyle cares about those guys. He's just -- it's like a family to him, and he cares about them. So I didn't mention their names tonight, because I want them to have the peace and quiet, and be able to relax, and get their feeling back before they go back to work. And Kyle said at this point, you know, it could be a couple of weeks, could be a month, depends on how these officers feel before they come back. Yes, Mark?
Thank you for bringing that up. I wasn't aware that we could.
I called Mark right before I got here, because I wanted to say something, Mark, but I didn't want to say anything without permission.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, because it was pretty clear last week not to say anything. And we will certainly recognize the officers involved at a mutually agreeable time and date and time, but we need to let them go through what they need to go through, as you suggested. So thank you for mentioning that tonight. I think it's important, you know, it was a jolt to the community and a jolt to the Atterboro Police Department. Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you. I have no other business this evening.
Before we adjourn, can I just remind everyone that Saturday night at 6:00 PM at Veterans Triangle is the POW MIA ceremony that's held every year?
It's going to be at the Triangle this year?
Yes.
As opposed to the Pavilion?
Yes.
Didn't we normally have it at the Pavilion? Do we have it?
It used to be at the Pavilion, yes, but it's switched a couple of years ago to the Veterans Triangle.
Okay.
So, and just, you know, John Bouchard and that whole POW MIA group put a lot of work and effort into this, and it's always very moving and very powerful, 6:00 PM.
So again, before everybody goes, I want to tell you a little story. So today is September 11th, as we all know, right? So I go to Coelho to pick up the kids. And what are they talking about? September 11th, of course, right? So I say to my -- So I say to my, you know, they're asking all kinds of questions. So I say to my kids, and I'm going to have to use my phone because I'm violating the law of the council. But I have to make sure that we all know what we have right here in the city of Attleboro remembering nine eleven and P O W M I A. So they had a lot of questions. I said, you know what, guys, let's go to Capron Park and see a piece of the World Trade Center. And both of my kids thought I was like a hero. They're like, Dad, what are you talking about? And I said, we have a piece of the World Trade Center in Attleboro. No way, says Cameron from the backseat. I said, no, yes, we do. I said, and so off we go. We walk around, we look at it and make them, Cameron, read to me the um the monument. And if you've never read it, I'm going to read it to you. What it says is, the image, the images carved into the granite represent prisoners of war, armed forces missing in action. And the uh his thumbs on the attack, the victims of the attack of America. The granite for the memorial was quarried in Pennsylvania. The granite was carved and polished in Vermont. The mill wheel weighs three thousand pounds. The mill wheel is a metaphor for our responsibility to never forget, to always remember the suffering and sacrifice of those memorialized here. This artifact steel is a spandrel five feet by seven feet weighing one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six pounds. It is part of the remains of the World Trade Center and granted by the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. The steel is set in the center of the inner circle formed by the walkway. The distance across this circle is nine feet eleven inches. The artifact faces the World Trade Center and it is inclined at an angle equal to the latitude of New York City. We have embedded three brass vectors in the walkway. The first is the is the heading and distance for New York and Washington. Three stars represent the location of this memorial, ground zero and the Pentagon. One inch equals ten miles. The second represents Shanksville, Pennsylvania, the third Logan, Boston. Reflect upon the suffering and sacrifice of those memorialized here and take pride in being a citizen of the United States of America, the greatest nation the world has known. This memorial was dedicated on Veterans Day, November eleventh, two thousand and eleven, at eleven hundred hours by the P O W M I A nine eleven Remembrance Committee of Attleboro. My youngest son said, then says to me, Dad, why is there a red rose on it? I said, dude, I don't know, but somebody came here and put it here. He said, I I probably know who it was, but I don't, I don't know that for sure. So we walk across the street to the Lynn Goodchild Memorial. I say, guys, come with me. So I show them that, I say, this young lady lived, grew up in our city. And her boyfriend was from Pawtucket and they were both killed in the in the aircraft, in this accident, in this terrorist attack. Oh my God, Dad, I didn't know that. And again, my youngest says, Dad, there's a red flower, another one of those red flowers on the other flowers. I said, yeah, I bet I know who put that there, but I don't know for sure. I said, her mother lives in Attleboro. What? What are you talking about? He said, no, she was from Attleboro, her family was from Attleboro, they lived here, they grew up here. I said, one lives around the corner from us. No, no. So we get in the car and the whole thing they're talking about going home is how cool it's going to be to go all, tell all of their friends. What we have right here in Attleboro memorializing P O W M I A and nine eleven. It was pretty fascinating to see the looks on their face. They have no idea, they weren't even here when this happened. But they're trying to rationalize in their brain what they see on the T V as sort of replay from that day. So I was going to say it when Rick said something, but he didn't sort of ask for any. But I thought it was important for people to know in the public that haven't been down to that memorial, to go take a look at it, read it, sit on the benches. Council Holmes lives right across the street, I know you're very familiar with it. But it's a beautiful place to just sit, reflect, look, think, read that plaque. That's pretty impressive words and a lot of thought went into how that was designed and constructed. And anybody that had anything to do with it in the city, thank you. And you know, thank you to the to the to the people that sacrificed their lives going back into that building. It was just an amazing end of the day when I picked them up at school and we were able to really go put, they were like, can we touch it? Yes, you can touch it. You know, it was really sort of um moving to see them sort of appreciate what Attleboro sort of is giving back to the community. And they are going to tell everybody, everybody at Coelho Middle School will know tomorrow that there is a piece of the World Trade Center in the city. Thank you, I appreciate your.
Pretty awesome.
The opportunity to tell you that little story, but it was it was pretty awesome for me to be able to say that to them, that that existed here in the city. Thank you.
For parents out there have to educate their kids in history because they're not getting it. Many places at all, history is important, that's part of our history.
Sure is. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett Harris was uh his class in the seventh grade at Coelho again interviewing people who lived there.
Yes.
It's really cool, so I think that, you know, it's it's alive and and Attleboro is an integral part of it and there's so many other cities across the country. Thank you for sharing that.
Thanks, yeah, no, thank you.